Good evening. We welcome you to the August 17th Troy City Council meeting. And we ask that all of you turn off your cellphones or electronic devices at this time. It interferes with our sound system. We're going to have the invocation by Jeff Toden, our Troy Police Department Chaplain, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Welcome, Jeff.
Father, we pause these moments to, first of all, honor you for who you are, your love toward us, your faithfulness. And thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us as a country and certainly here in this community. Thank you, Father, for the freedoms we enjoy and for those that defend that freedom overseas in harm's way and then right here locally. We pray for their safety and their protection. And thank you, Father, that your presence can be very real to each one of their way and to those here that are missing loved ones. Then, Father, we too thank you for the joys we have in this community that's so diverse and yet there can be unity of purpose and unity of planning. And so for these men and women tonight, as they work, give them wisdom, give them insight. And I pray, Father, that all we do would please and honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff, for a nice invocation. Always nice to see you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Plata?
Here, Shilin.
Here?
Councilmember Val Tramidi.
Here.
Gruelfield.
Here.
Eisenbacker.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Callagay.
Here.
And Kerwin.
Here. Forum present. This evening, we have several presentations, and so I will go down to the front for those. Now, our first presentation is very special, and I'd like to call forward Army Staff Sergeant Mark Strickland. And would you like to come with your family too? Or would you like to come along? It's up to you. Oh, he's out there with his students, out there with Mary Ann, a good neighbor. Come up here, please. Thank you. Want to turn around so that everyone can see you? This is our Welcome Home Proclamation for Army Staff Sergeant Mark Strickland. Whereas whenever called upon to defend our nation's security at home or abroad, the men and women who serve in the United States Armed Forces respond immediately, placing this nation's interests above their own. Army Staff Sergeant Mark Strickland is one such hero. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices made by our military personnel are vital to maintaining America's blessings of freedom and liberty. And whereas the families of those serving in our nation's military make meaningful sacrifices and provide the support, love, and dedication essential to their well-being and service, such as Mark's wife, Jin Sun, and their son, Julian. And whereas Army Staff Sergeant Mark Strickland joins the great heritage of the brave warriors serving for freedom around the world in such places as Yorktown and Lexington, Gettysburg and Appomattox, Normandy and Argon, Iwo Jima and Okinawa, Seoul and the Chosin Reservoir, Saigon and Kensan, and now in places like Fallujah, Cabo, and Baghdad. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby proclaim August 17th, 2009, as an official date in the City of Troy to most gratefully honor, sincerely appreciate, and wholeheartedly thank Army Staff Sergeant Mark Strickland for his seven years in the Army and, most recently, in Afghanistan. And be it further resolved that the City of Troy encourages citizens, schools, businesses, and the media of the City of Troy to use this occasion to recognize, honor, and show appreciation to Army Staff Sergeant Mark Strickland for his dedicated service and service to our nation. This is presented the 17th day of August 2009, signed by myself and all the members of council.
I want to thank everybody for this. Thank you for the ovation. And cities like Troy make it really easy to do the job that I do. Thanks.
And it's thanks to Mark's wonderful neighbors that recognized his homecoming and his service to the community. And we have this program available for those, if any of you have, other service people that are coming home that are to be welcomed. We certainly do welcome and honor and appreciate all of our service people. Now, we have our next presentation, and that will be, on behalf of the City of Troy Employees' Casual for a Cause Program, and our Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will be there.
Good evening. It's my pleasure again, on behalf of the employees, I want to welcome Val McCrina from On My Own. We have a check for Val for $1,019 for On My Own. They help adults with mild developmental disabilities become independent, social, and contributing members of the community. They're a private nonprofit organization that receives no United Way or government funding, and I'll let Val tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak for a couple of minutes on behalf of my agency. We were founded approximately 11 years ago. We are located right here in Troy at Crooks Road, just at the corner of Maple Lawn. We believe very strongly in the vision that individuals who have developmental disabilities have the same right as everybody else, that they have the right to choose where they live, where they work, and where they worship. Our program, as Cindy said, is nonsectarian. We receive no government funding. We rely very heavily on donations for support and for people like the City of Troy to go ahead and support us, and that means an awful lot. This money is going to be used directly to go ahead and help these individuals in a class that we normally would have not been able to fund. I believe so strongly in our agency, and I am going to take the couple of minutes that I have to tell you about what it is that we do. The developmental population are those who suffer from any learning disabilities. It could be Asperger's, it could be autism, it could be Down Syndrome, it could be epilepsy. They are what I also consider the lost population. They're not the children, they're not the physically disabled, and they are not the elderly. But they are those that are out there and want and desire to have the same life that we all do. We have an apartment program in which they can live independently. We have a social program in which we teach them and give them all the support that they need to do what you do in your life. You go to the movies, you have friends, you balance your checkbook, you go shopping. Those are all the supports that we give them. I am extremely proud of what we do. This has been what I've been doing for the last five years. I don't look upon it as a job. I look upon it as a mission to go ahead and help those who can't speak for themselves. And because we are private and because I am constantly fighting to go ahead and talk about who we are and get the support of the community, it is my incredible pleasure to say how much I thank you. I didn't go to Cindy, I didn't ask for this help. She came to me. I am humbled by the fact that Cindy and all of the employees of the City of Troy said, "We want to support you." That means an awful lot, and it's extremely important to me that I tell each and every one of you that it was the city who went ahead and said, "I want to go ahead and help you." This is a tremendous lady, and it's a tremendous amount of money, and you're going to do a tremendous amount of good, and I thank you.
Now, our next award is presented to Susan Leirstein. So if Susan would come forward. This is always so heavy. The award we're presenting tonight is actually to the Department of Purchasing, and it is the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, and it recognizes organizational excellence in procurement. Now, this is given when the department achieves a high score of rating in standardized criteria, and it measures innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership attributes in the procurement function. It is presented and sponsored by the National Purchasing Institute, the California Association of Public Purchasing Officers, the Florida Association of Public Purchasing Officers, and Institute of Supply Management, the National Institute for Government Purchasing, National Association of State Procurement Officers, officials, and the National Association of Educational Procurement. This is awarded the 14th annual time of the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for 2009, and the City of Troy is one of only 59 cities in all of the United States has received this award and has received it for seven consecutive years. And so this beautiful trophy is presented to you, and we appreciate everything that you do and the recognition that you're receiving on behalf of the city. Thank you. Want to say a few words?
No, I just want to, Julie and I accept this award on behalf of the City of Troy for the Purchasing Department, but it is really an organizational award. It is not just simply something that purchasing does. We do have a set of standards and policies that we follow that is set by this body in city management, and we're very happy to be able to follow those rules and procedures in order to really achieve excellence. So thank you.
Now, the next two awards are going to be received by Stephen Cooperreiter, and also this first one is Cindy Stewart and Stephen Cooperreiter together. Stephen is our risk manager. The 2009 Membership Achievement Award for Troy Employee Retiree Wellness Program is presented to Risk Manager Stephen Cooperreiter and Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart. And that is for the program that they instituted here in Troy, and it is also going to be presented so that other cities can also do the similar things. Are you going to talk about the details of the program instead of me? Okay, good. Thank you.
Well, we started this program a couple of years ago, about two years ago, and it took us a little time to get more involved and get employees on board with it, and they're still coming on board with it. Some of the unique things about it are that we are including retirees in this program, not just employees. We are also not providing any incentives for our employees. When I say incentives, monetary incentives. A lot of other municipalities provide those monetary incentives to their employees to participate, and one of the main things I felt was is if our employees want to be healthy, it's on them. Okay? And I think a lot of them have participated in this. I think our first wellness fair that we had, we had about 150 employees attend that, including some retirees. So, and that included about 25 vendors, which included our health insurance carriers and several other, American Diabetes Association, chiropractors, fitness, even our own Parks and Rec departments, fitness programs and things of that nature, and the Police and Fire Department provided some safety-related information to our employees as well, and there was a myriad of others. We've also included in this program quite a few other things, and basically on minimal dollars. And that was one of the other things why they provided this award to us, because they saw it as very, very low cost. We've had a Weight Watchers program that we put out here, and we had employees that participated in that, who's over 300 pounds together, which, that's great, you know, over 12 weeks' time span. So, we've done quite a few promotional programs. We have a couple of promotional programs in the hopper right now that we're going to do. We're going to have a little picnic that's going to be coming up here shortly for the employees in September. That's going to include recipes, healthy recipes, those kinds of things. We've started an online newsletter, some of those kinds of things that have been going on.
We've got walking programs, a couple of walking programs.
Yeah, walking programs. Had some of our employees participated in some runs that we had advertised to them. So, trying to get people active and get them moving and those kinds of things.
Keep our health insurance down.
Our rates down, you know, hopefully to help. It's tough to measure those kinds of things when you're running a program like this, but if you're not providing monetary incentives, that too also helps to keep those kinds of things down, and a lot of our employees are participating in these things. Do you want to say anything?
We're proud of all our employees and our retirees.
For everybody who's participating in these things.
Can I please to present to Stephen Cooperreiter the Chapter Service Award from the Public Risk Management Association. Now, this is, each year, the Public Risk Management Association gives chapter presidents the opportunity to select someone from their chapter to be recognized at the annual conference. And they're encouraged to select someone from their chapter who's dedicated their time to and provide their chapter with exemplary services. Individuals are selected, and this year Stephen Cooperreiter was selected for the 2009 Prima Chapter Service Award in recognition of demonstrating leadership, commitment, and outstanding service to the chapter. And it was presented the first day of June 2009, presented here. And I want to tell you a little bit about why he received this award. Stephen has been dedicated to the organization and has taken on many responsibilities that have made it a successful organization. Cheered the membership committee from 2003 to 2008 and continues to prepare the annual membership directory. Minimized the overall cost by acquiring funds for advertising from sponsors and affiliated members. Cheered the bylaws committee, and in 2008 made significant changes which were approved by the board to reflect current language to coincide with technology. Most of all, he has done an outstanding job with the annual Donald P. Althuff Memorial Scholarship Golf Outing. Don, a former committee chairperson, educator, and mentor to many members, was tragically killed in an auto accident in 2002. This fund was established in his memory to provide scholarships for students pursuing education in risk management and the insurance field. Since 2003, Stephen's been the driving force to organize, collect donations, obtain whole sponsors, and bringing in more than $30,000 for scholarships, but I understand now it's up to $40,000 in scholarships. 2009 will be the seventh annual golf outing, and it's continued to be a success. Not only is he being recognized for his organizational skills for this organization, but for what he does here for the City of Troy. We too recognize his talent and his dedication, and he doesn't get recognized very often by some folks here in the city because it's one of those things that, you know, is like an unsung hero. And we do appreciate everything you do, and it certainly helps us in many, many ways. So we thank you and appreciate all the good things you do. It's always a nice thing to begin the meeting with recognition of others because, as we know, nobody ever does anything alone. We do things together as a team, and so these recognitions are very well deserved this evening. This evening, we have no carryover items or public hearings or postponed items, so we go right to public comment, and the public comment section is for items that are not on the agenda. And so I will call on the folks that have signed up out on the kiosk in the order that they signed up, and the first one is Marvin Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Marvin Reinhardt, lived in the city for the last 54 years, and I said I was going to bring up, I call them the Troy Crooks Incorporated. You know how much money these people got through the bailouts to the United States? And how much our city's going bankrupt because these cities are crying, they don't have money? You know, they pay big memberships to be in these organizations, and I can't get their check stubs. They won't give it to me. I got to have some type of four-year to find out, are they actually paying these, are they actually paying these fees? Because when they get a $10,000 thing, they got their name on top. Like, you want to be like Delphi? You want to be like General Motors? How about Bank of America? That guy ripped off half the country. These guys get big bonuses. And also too, how can Rochester shut down Rochester completely? You can't drive through it, so it's free, and all those charities make money. We collect all that money for Troy Days, that sponsorship is short out, and we lose money on the project. That's because somebody's got their hands in the project, because if it was a legal thing, you guys would have all the money in the paper. So all the citizens who know all that money going for all these years, because we could do the same thing underneath Somerset. If those teabaggers could go out there and rag their signs, and those angry mob people chasing people around, bringing in the UAW people in Detroit, I think the citizens can have a party underneath that. If Rochester can do it, we can. Even Berkeley shuts down 12 Mile, I think there's a take going on in this city. And then I started to laugh. What's wrong with this city? And in one newspaper, I saw this. I probably can't find it now, but it had the Troy Leadership Committee asking for something, then the Troy Community Coalition, then the Leadership Troy, and Leadership Oakland, all crying for money. And you know what? If you give any money to any of those organizations involved with these organizations, you're just wasting your profit. Okay? And as far as your sidewalk deal out there, I think I read it in the paper, something about, "We don't make crossing walks for school kids, we make it for the pedestrians." Because this city doesn't worry about raising a child, this city worried about how to kill them, because there have been suicides over there by Glenmore Subdivision. Kids commit suicide because of these problems in the city, because the police are harassing people. This guy has two stores in the city. One up at 19 and Square Lake, never been inspected. He's got another one that gets inspected every three months. You know why? Because the guys who own those properties up in Glenmore, who don't have sidewalks, by the way, you know how much cheaper your house is in this city without a sidewalk? That is done on purpose, because those guys have been cheating the city ever since Hurmore Glenmore Subdivision been put together. And as far as Westover goes, if you need a street light put on Rochester, go to Westover Church. They know how to grease the right people. They control that light out in front of that church. You tell, and I'll tell you what, you watch. Whoever's a member of that church will be elected this next year. You watch. They don't even have to show up to the debates, they just walk in because that church controls this city, and there's no difference where you run and hide. So, it's going to get worse. The next week, I'm going to tear apart the Girls and Boys Club because of the corruption over there, and there's a guy called Jim Campbell of the Republican Party. Come out of your hole, you mother. Thank you.
Mr. Peters is our second person that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Peters?
I wanted to talk a little about the economy. It seems to me like we've been on the supply side monitorism for about the last 30 years, and I think it's, while there's some aspects that are probably important, I think we ought to switch more to a wage-price Keynesian demand-side approach to government with the economy. The reason I'm saying this is because we seem to be on the teeter-totter alone. When the employment gets low, inflation goes up, and that's kind of related not only to the hospitals and to the fuel, but it's kind of related to the banks and everything else. And I think that has a more integrated approach to stuff. I also think that the closer our country is more, disposable income is important, and it seems right now that credit markets and things of that nature are eradicating people's personal income, and I think that's what we should strive to try to promote. You know, there's an old saying that you should stabilize the old while you promote the new, and I think that's kind of the direction that we should go on. So, like I said, the closer we get to equality and equal opportunity, I think that helps us all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. James Savage is our next person that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the City Council. Before I actually get into my... Before I actually get into my comments, I want to explain that when I come to City Council, I only see around Troy what the average citizen sees. So in my comments, I may be way off base, but I read the newspaper sometimes, sometimes I miss one. I sometimes miss meetings, so I'm not fully informed. So if I am way off base, then I am quite willing to stand corrected. However, having said that, it was about middle of June, driving south on Rochester Road, I saw a new road sign. July 6th, construction, Big Beaver and Rochester Road intersection, use alternate route. I inquired at City Office and was told it was for beautification, and the DDA was paying for it. And the DDA, incidentally, for people who are not aware, is the Downtown Development Authority. Well, that immediately aroused my suspicions. Now, does that mean that the people who make up the DDA dig into their bank accounts to pay for it? I don't think so. I think ultimately, it will be paid for out of our tax dollars. Whether it be property taxes, business, county, state, or federal, it is still the people's tax dollars. Prior to the start of the project, I studied the area. Because it's in my neighborhood, it all looked in good condition. In fact, it was one of the few bits of pavement in Troy with no potholes. When I learned that the project would take several months, I realized this means big bucks. My first thought was they're going to build an overpass, which should have been built about 40 years ago anyhow. Or maybe a roundabout, which there is room for, and it would help the traffic flow. But now, after about six weeks, all I see is sections of perfectly good, regular concrete being replaced by new red concrete. My question, is this beautification? I've heard that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. If so, how does that affect people who get mad when they see red? I've heard figures of $1 million or more. I'm getting this from, I've talked to neighbors, or neighbors have talked to me, and they say, "What is going on?" I don't know. I've talked to other people, some of them that work for the city, they don't know what's going on. Which, it seems like it's a little bit of a secret. But anyhow, I figured the demand of money that is obviously being spent on this project, this takes me back to my old cliche. The purpose of government is to spend taxpayer money. And who is this beautifying, pardon me, and who is benefiting from this beautifying expense? We know the contractor will make a ton of money. So will the engineering company and the consulting company. And maybe, it's been, it's has been said, that maybe McDonald's wanted this for Easy In-N-Out. I know the thousands of drivers who use that intersection every day will not forget the disruption in a hurry. And there is a total disruption. For a society in the worst economic times that most people can remember, this kind of waste is inexcusable. And the only people who can ever be held accountable, because it seems like when we're dealing with DDA and a lot of these other organizations or subgovernments, nobody is accountable. So therefore, we come back, to the only people who can ever be held accountable is our elected officials at vote-in time. And I hope people remember that. Thank you.
And next, we have Bill Cowker. And how about Linda? No? All right. Is there anyone else that I've missed? Okay. Then we'll go from public comment to items that are not on the agenda to our regular business items. And let me scroll to see if someone has requested an item. And they have. We do move those forward in the order, but still within the regular business. And so we'll go to item E8 at this time. And E8 is an item that is proposed charter amendments, resolutions, and there is written information that is on the table that we've received. It is not in your packet, the details there, because it was a late submittal, but we do have the details. We did ask, there are two people that want to speak on this. Cynthia Wilshire and Mary Ann Bernardi.
Yes.
Councilman Eisenbacher, did you want to speak first? Want a clarification?
One quick clarification is that this information was available on the website under late submissions.
Yes. It was available there, but when I'm looking at the packet there, people are wondering, you know, what, they're looking through their packet. Cynthia, would you like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm glad to see everyone's here tonight. It's refreshing. You all know, I've been on the Charter Revision Board, excuse me, Committee, for more than 25 years. Been around a long time. I've seen a lot of stuff going on. Again, we had to prepare for a last-minute meeting because we couldn't get a quorum. It took a lot of effort on the dedicated staff in the office to take care of getting seven people, an attorney, and a clerk together. Just since trying to put this meeting together, they had nine days. Two of us on the committee had family members that were emergency situations and were hospitalized. Another one of our members had surgery for an ongoing medical problem. Another member came down at the last minute because he's up in Traverse City, and he wondered what in the world was going on. We should have had this packet information since this had been on the council a month before. I picked up my packet, was not ready. They called me at 4 o'clock on Tuesday night to pick it up. I'd been there Tuesday morning, I was told it would be ready. It was not ready. I picked it up Wednesday morning. I'm in charge of a group at the community center, and we're there from 9 to 4:00. I had very little time to prepare for the Thursday morning event at 10:30. You can't do much research when you get out of a group at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I don't think anyone can do a good job without studying these things. On top of it, they did make some last-minute changes. They were on the phone, and our meeting started about a half a minute late, thank goodness, because originally, there were 10 items scheduled to be discussed. This was taking down quite a few. In the past, I can tell you that if there's more than three or four things on the ballot, they don't pass. And a lot of these things are tied together. And if one doesn't pass, they all go down. Some of them are state-mandated things, which really don't need to be changed because we can just refer to the state to take precedence because that's what we do. So that's just something confusing to add to the citizens that, you know, it's like cleaning up language. We'd had a problem with this committee. They seemed to want to pick their own time and day when they have the meeting. It's convenient. For 45 years, we met on Wednesday evenings. Did a good job. People were allowed to participate. All of a sudden, we have someone that comes on the committee, and it's not convenient for his job. He can't make the meeting. So we started switching around meetings. And then they were switched to days, which is not convenient to the public. We are the only committee or board in this city that decides when we're going to meet, and if we're going to meet, and what time we're going to meet, if it's convenient. This kind of thing has got to stop. We did come to a conclusion that we will meet the second Thursday of every month, alternating day and evening. This is confusing to the public. Are they going to know we're going to be meeting days without having to consult someone at the city or the newspapers to find that information out? We need consistency. And I feel very strongly that this is a very important part of this city. This deals with our constitution. Our constitution has been well taken care of in this city for a long time. It's worked for us. And it's worked for us well, without a lot of changes. And all of a sudden, we've got all these changes, and I really feel it's just to micromanage a situation that some people aren't happy with, what's going on. I do hope these things pass, just for the fact that there will be a lot more confusion. If they don't, because if one goes down, several of them will go down, and we're right back at square one. We had basically two days to prepare for this meeting. And now that we have a semi-set meeting, this is somewhat better, but I think the council should address the fact that all the committees meet either day or evening and not be able to pick and choose. And also, when you sign up for a committee, you know when they meet. That's your obligation. And if it isn't convenient, don't volunteer. You can't expect everyone else to change because you're not available. I also feel we've had people missing. And for any board city, and even on this council, if you miss 25% of the meetings, you aren't doing your job. And if you were employed, you would soon be unemployed with that kind of an attendance record. The city is a business. It needs to be run professionally by professional volunteers, or volunteers that act professionally and responsibly, not as a whim to do something because they think they might like to do it.
Mrs. Wilshire, the five-minute time is...
I just want you to remember one thing. We need to cooperate more, all of us together. We've had a great city for 55 years or more, and we can continue on with that, but we've all got to work together to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Bernardi, did you wish to speak on item E8 also?
Good evening, Mary Ann, Council. I have nothing prepared. I'm only here because the previous member from the Charter Committee spoke, and I didn't know what she was going to say. I do know what she said the last time she came to the committee, and I think it was full of a lot of distortion, an enormous amount of distortion. None of that content was presented to the committee prior to her coming before you. As today, none of that information came before the committee. After the last time she spoke, I called Tony Bartholomew because I was very shocked at some of the statements, especially about the scheduling, and wanted, number one, to let Tony know that, you know, I personally could do anything, day, evening, whatever, and would change whatever schedule I had to do, changes on, to make this committee, and not to worry if she had to change things around. And then I asked her, "Where did all this come from, this complaint?" I said, "Are," you know, because I was new to the committee, "Were there other people who were having problems making the committee?" Or, you know, because the complaint then was that, and again, I hear it tonight, is that we're not having, that we're having day meetings which, quote, "are not convenient for the public." And that's, there was a similar complaint by this person in the previous time she came ahead before you. And I asked Tony Bartholomew, "If people were not able to meet in the evening, is that the problem?" And I wanted to make sure she knew I could. And she said, "No, it's not the problem as far as she could see." She went down the line and addressed every single person, and every single person that she, on that committee, indicated they would be willing to meet in the evening. And that's exactly what happened in our meeting. We wanted to make it convenient to everybody on the committee. We wanted to make it convenient to everybody in the public, certainly the public. I think anybody knows me knows that. Mention the public, that's my, the hot button, because I want public access to government. I want transparency, I want openness, and I'll fight to the death if need to. But fortunately, in America, we don't need to. So, and I heard that attitude from everybody around the committee, that they were more than willing, they would say, well, they would say like I did, "Well, this is more convenient to me, but I'd be willing to meet whenever." And I heard that on every single member. So I don't understand where these complaints are coming from. Really perplexed. And I'm, secondly, perplexed about why they're coming to you and not being discussed in the committee. I had a lot of feeling about what this member said the first time she came to you, because I felt that much of that was directed towards me, because much of her content was about the, quote, "new members." And I was the only new member at that time, so hello, I guess it was me. And I had a lot of feeling about it. I did email you about some of those things. And I felt that it was appropriate that we talk about it in the committee. Well, this last meeting that we had, there was so much crucial information and work that we had to do for the city, I did not feel that we could spend one second of time on anything like that, but that, in my mind, I was planning on the next meeting, bringing it up where it really is appropriate to be brought up. If there's a problem, I'm sure we can work it out with one another, and I just don't know what the problem is. When the complaints come before you, and I do a little bit of research and find out that there's no obstacle, everybody wants to cooperate. So the one person on that committee, as Tony went down the list, that wanted an evening meeting was Cynthia Wilshire, who just spoke. She wanted evening meetings. And so the whole committee, none of the others really wanted that or needed it or whatever, but the statement that Cynthia made in front of you was that people wanted, you know, evening meetings, and they were being prevented, and blah, blah, blah. Well, that's not the case. There was one person who wanted evening meetings. Well, the entire committee provided that for Cynthia in our last meeting. We did take the time to rearrange that schedule and make sure that we alternated day and evening to accommodate those who wanted evening, which really was just one person who wanted it. But I was more than willing to do that for one person. One person is important. And I don't understand statements like, "We can't expect people to change for you." Where is this coming from? Or are people doing it as a whim because they want to do it, not because it's important? Every single person on that committee is doing that because of their love of city, country? I mean, you know, I'm quite able to pick up attitudes and to pick up on where people are coming from. It seems to be a talent. I have a very, very good ability to do that. I don't see anyone on that committee who is doing it just because they want to do it, and just because it's a whim or superficial. They're there because they're dedicated. And the switch to days, or she's also said today, "Switching to days," or something, was not convenient for the public.
Mrs. Bernardi, I need to interrupt you, because actually, we're talking about the charter items that are on tonight, not about the committee setup.
Well, the previous person was speaking on that also.
I know they went there.
And I can't, I thought that was what we were going, I didn't know what she was going to talk about. And I think it should have appropriately been brought to the committee rather than before you. I brought my charter book, I brought the resolutions, because I thought maybe that's what she would talk about. And if she was presenting her side of the issue, you know, I wanted to present the other side. Because I think, really, that even is inappropriate, because we speak to you through our votes. And the vote was three to three. But I thought if a person was going to speak on one side, the other side should be presented as well.
And we do have the minutes, we do have the minutes from the meeting that are before us along with the other items, but I...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What did you say?
I said, "We do have the minutes so we know that the comments by the members of the Charter Committee on the items that they were discussing." And it was the charter amendments that are suggested for the ballot for November.
I think we have a problem with this committee, not with a committee, but with a person on the committee. And we need to start dealing with it in an appropriate manner. And I think that means in the committee, not here.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on the charter amendment issue that's here? No one else signed up for that. I will bring it back to the council table, then. There is a series of resolutions that have to do with proposed charter amendments. And council members, we had some discussion at the last meeting when I was ill and was not there, but did get an update of what happened. Then I did review everything from the Charter Revision Committee and the resolutions that are before us. And my question for council members is that this change to the charter is suggested for vacancies in elected office, when a council member or a mayor would have to step down from their position. And in the original charter, which was set up in 1955, there is a provision for the council to appoint, if there's a certain timeframe within, they can appoint, or they could choose not to, and then wait till the next regular city election. Then we've gone to elections every two years instead of every year, okay? In the years since 1955, that there have been councils, there have been only two appointments in that total length of time. One was Tony Pilata for Mr. John Kokales's position, when he left the council mid-time on council. The other was when Joanne Hubbard left the council, and Al Liebrich was appointed to that position. Those were the only two, that in my research of data that I had at home, that I could come up with, and in talking to Councilman Pilata. So my question is, why we need the change when there's a provision for appointment of an individual, should that happen, and that it is so rare, when we already have on the ballot three or four proposals? Mrs. Bloom, is it three or four?
There are three of them already that are...
Three that are on there, okay. And also, at this time in November, this will be the first time that the school board election, which is a separate election, is on a November election because of the consolidation that the state election laws occurred. So my question is, do we really want to have all of this, which are six additional items, on this ballot with all the rest going on? And if there was a definite need, then I'd say, yes, we need to have them on the ballot, because the other four items that are on there, I think, are things that we need to clean up in the charter. This, I'm not convinced that we need to do that. Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I correct my earlier statement?
Yes.
The two provisions that have already been approved for placement on the ballot are Section 3.7, the election of the mayor pro tem, and Section 3.10, the city manager appointment and qualification as to residence.
There were others that were suggested, but they were not brought forward from Charter Revision.
Correct. The other one is the timeframe for the city manager.
Thank you. Okay. Yes. Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I share your understanding of the research. There's one other thing that I came across, and that was, there was a time that there was an appointment necessary, and the seat was not filled. And that's when Councilman Goslin was originally elected to council. It was an unfilled position that carried over into an election. The other thing...
Who was the person that went off council?
Howard Johnson.
Oh.
Couldn't remember.
Thank you.
So three times it's come up, as far as I've heard. The other thing that I think is an extenuating circumstance for the need of this is this change in the state law for the elections, because we only have four dates permissible to have an election anymore, because we've consolidated them, which gives us a February date, the August primary, and the November election, and I can't remember the fourth one now.
May.
May. Thank you. So if the council, I mean, obviously, the simplest thing is for the council just to select a replacement if it's unexpected. And the intent of this isn't for the unexpected reasons, like heaven forbid, a death in office or any other immediate need. The thought behind this was more of the long-term need, say, like the example I gave, is say, I found my term wasn't ending, and I found out I was being transferred as of December 1st, or November 1st, or whatever, in a timeframe that aligns with an election, that I could offer a resignation that would allow the residents of the city to elect a successor, instead of having the seat empty, or having it appointed, as opposed to being, as opposed to having it filled by the residents when the timeframes work. If the timeframes don't work, then it's more important for the council to fill the position. The interest is, is to save the cost of special elections when we don't have something else, and to have an orderly transition if a council member knows in advance that they have to leave the council. Nothing else, really.
Okay. I agree with not having special elections because of the extra cost that's involved, unless it's a dire emergency situation, of course. I just was unaware of the reasoning, and I think I spoke to you about that.
Yeah, briefly.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
You know, I'm troubled in the use of primary election, the language "primary election" as it appears. Let's say we're in the Yellow Document, in the green, it suggests it's the primary election. I don't know if people had an opportunity to read the Sunday paper, but there was an article in the Sunday paper which pointed out that the last presidential elections switched primaries unexpectedly. You all recall how this worked out, in an attempt from Michigan to move up there, the primary date actually changed. So we're not talking about the August primary, we're just talking about a primary that was chosen by political parties to put, to run their election. This language, in the same case, not referring to the August election, but referring to simply "primary" in the event that something unexpected like that might happen again. And in the hypothetical that was put forward by Councilmember Eisenbacher, that election was then that next election, I'm troubled by that, particularly because, as the article pointed out, in this unforeseen election, as we now know, some had the ability to attract who went in and assigned which political party they voted for. That was unforeseen, that doesn't normally take place. But I'm not comfortable having that kind of thing happen, where one would go in to vote for a city council member, and yet only one party chose to have a primary that year. It seems to me, if we have the primary language as written in some of these suggestions, that this hypothetical, this is one of those unforeseen contingencies, where someone would say, well, I'm not a member of this party, I'm not interested in voting in this party, yet that's the only opportunity to vote on that next election, because of the language that's indicated here.
So you're uncomfortable with Section 6.7.2, because it mentions primary election?
Specifically, primary.
Yes. And we are elected as nonpartisan election.
And it wasn't just the August primaries. I understand the August primaries.
Right, yeah.
But there are times when some, one political party will have a primary, the other one will choose not to have a primary.
Right, okay. Yes, Mayor Protem Howard?
A funny clarification from the city attorney. It's my understanding that those presidential primaries are considered separate and distinct elections, not addressed under the statutory laws that will be addressed in municipal elections. Is that correct?
Under state law, they do set forth four election dates, and they've already been referenced by Councilmember Eisenbacher. And that would be the dates that elections can be held within the state. They did hold primaries in January this past election, that is correct. But because the primaries are set forth and are four election dates, that would be, that would govern. There would be four dates.
And could you just clarify that for us on a practical level, what that means, practically speaking? Would that be August and November, then?
The way that the ballot proposal is written assumes that the primary will occur in August, and that is why it's triggered by the April 1 date. So if a vacancy occurs prior to April 1st, then there will be an opportunity to do all of the requirements, the prerequisites for getting that ballot, or that vacancy posted, getting the advertisement out, getting the petitions in, so that persons know that there is a position, and it can be on that ballot.
But if the primary date is changed by, not by us, but by other circumstances, as it was this past year, we would have no control over that. And so I think the question was, why are we going to have wording about primary election in our charter when it could be affected by presidential elections?
It is possible that you could put an August election date as opposed to a primary election date, if council feels more comfortable with that language. That is a possible resolution. Again, I was gone, I didn't have the opportunity to speak directly with Mr. Alroth from the Attorney General's office, but I think that that would probably be acceptable to him and to the state.
The change in election time to odd year for city council election, so that it was not on when it's a county, state, or a presidential election, was chosen specifically to take it away from the partisan elections. And by going to an August primary, it would still put it in the same bucket with partisan elections. And so that is another concern, because not everybody votes in primaries. Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, and not to discount what you said, because it is accurate information, but I would just also add that there are other offices, the judicial offices, for example, would also sometimes be on that same ballot, and those are nonpartisan offices as well. So again, not to discount from anything that you have said, but also just to indicate that there are other offices, nonpartisan offices, that may be on an August ballot.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Howard?
Additionally, it should be noted that the charter already allows for a city election in August. In the case of a vacancy, that cannot be filled by this body here. It also allows, by the way, for a February election, which would cost the city money, which is one of the things that we are attempting, or at least I, as a council member, am attempting to avoid.
I thought we did away with the primaries in the charter. Isn't that one of the charter revisions, Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I believe that what Councilman Howard is referring to is, if there is a vacancy, then there has to be, and it's not filled by appointment, then there has to be an election. And the next possible election date could be the February date or the August date. And certainly, he can clarify if I've misstated that.
Is that because of the state election laws, picking four dates? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor.
Right. Councilman Eisenbacher?
Yeah, that's, I think, if we don't make this change to try and steer to existing ballots with this option, then we're forced to have that February. I would like to get more clarification on the January one, if we'd be forced, because I don't think, these changes won't allow us to have a January election. But if there's a January election, and the council hasn't filled a position, I believe that we would have to put that item on it, on that ballot.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
In the suggested wording as written.
Yeah, I think we should add...
Yeah, I think the suggested wording as written would indicate that.
I think we should change it to say an August primary, or August...
Or in conjunction with the four state, you know, use the state language. But again...
Other council members that want to weigh in? I see some people looking like they want to say something. I don't know if they're ready to or not. Councilwoman Beltrame?
I will just make a comment on this particular small discussion. I too have concerns about a single-party primary, where we would end up. August primaries, I agree with the city attorney, there are lots of nonpartisan positions on those ballots. We would be absolutely the last thing on those ballots, and that's of some concern to me, particularly in a presidential year with a bazillion things to vote on. I am very concerned about a situation where someone could be elected, or in the second, almost third year of their term, say, in November, circumstances change, they throw a letter out there, or they resign, and there's a single-party primary in February. And then we end up given whatever language, if we aren't careful how we word it, on that Republican or Democrat ballot, because that does kind of scream "nonindependent." And it also screws up the primary for the parties, because it brings in voters that they may not have, that are not interested, and their results are not good either. And so, in the interest of transparency and accuracy for everybody, I think it's a bad idea. So crafting something that does not leave us open to that, and I know the attorney said, well, you could call out specific August and November elections. That's fine with me. Or, you know, primaries with multiple parties. I could live with that, too. But I do have a concern about a single-party primary.
Mayor?
Councilman, did you signal, Councilman Fleming, or not?
No.
Okay. Councilman, Mayor Protem Howard?
I was just going to add that the, it's my understanding, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, or the assistant city clerk, or deputy city clerk, I'm sorry, but it's my understanding that the presidential primaries are actually not state elections. They're administered by the state on behalf of the political parties, and therefore not, and that's why they're separate and distinct from Michigan election law, as well as the Home Rule Cities Act, because they are, and this is what the clerk told me last year, I think it was last year, was that the, those are party elections. And obviously, the parties don't have their own infrastructure, so they have to rely on the state to conduct them. So the state is essentially conducting the election on behalf of the Democrat and/or the Republican Party, whatever the case might be. Last year, as we know, it was conducted on behalf of the Republican Party only, and the Democrat Party was non-binding.
Mrs. Bloom?
Just again, to reiterate, that the state statute does set forth four dates that the city could have an election, and that would be the dates that have already been mentioned, the four dates per year. Ms. Pilata may have some additional information to share with you as well.
It's my understanding that, especially in primaries, that candidates can be nominated two ways, either by caucus or by calling an election.
Mrs. Pilata, could you start again? I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm not sure if this, can you hear me? It's my understanding that for a primary election, particularly, that the parties, it's the party's decision whether or not they're going to call a caucus to elect their candidates, or have an election, and that's what happened in January. They wanted to do it by election and not by caucus.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Howard?
I think so. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
A couple things, as I was looking, and just taking it all in and listening to this. As I noticed, the four state dates that are provided, that you could have elections, the February, May, August, and November, they're spread out over a three-month period pretty much equal, which allows for, should there be a vacancy, that the election would not be that far off. I understand what Councilwoman Beltrame is talking about, in the sense that it sounds to me like February's primary could... to me like February's primary could be just one-sided, which creates a problem, but I do want to point out that those four dates are spread out fairly equal, so it allows for that year period, any time there is, or should be, a resignation, that there wouldn't be that much time to fill that seat, because it's every three months.
Again, I wanted to express my concern about having a city council election for a nonpartisan position on city council, on with the same ballot as partisan positions, because that was the intent, was to have it a separate time. And that was why, when the original charter was developed, we had April elections that would not be in the November elections with other elections. And then when we were compelled to move to a November election time because of the state election laws, the council purposely chose to, and the citizens agreed on, because it had to go to the ballot of the people, that it should be on odd election years. The people did not say that it should be on a November, when we have all those other ballot issues there. So I just wanted to remind folks of that occurrence.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Just bouncing off what you said, and I appreciate that, but we are not talking about filling two or three seats. We're talking about filling, if there was a resignation and there was a time left, a year, six months, two years, however that works. And the other thing, I think that we keep missing here is this, that should a vacancy occur, and correct me if I'm wrong, I asked our city attorney, if the council fails to appoint it, agreed, and my goodness, we are pretty split for many years, so one vacancy occurs, and now you have a three-three vote, the other choice then is to hold a special election. Am I correct on that, Ms. Bloom?
Mrs. Bloom? Yes, that is correct, that you would, the charter currently allows 30 days to make an appointment, and it would be by majority vote of the remaining members.
That's currently what's going on right now, or what our charter directs us to do. And would our, anybody know the cost of a city, or a special election, thereabouts appropriate, approximate cost?
Mrs. Bloom?
Well, I don't have the exact figures, Ms. Pilata may, but I believe it's in excess of $100,000.
I might repeat that, so we can hear that a little bit louder.
Pardon?
I believe that it is in excess of $100,000. Ms. Pilata may have more accurate information, but that's just, that's a ballpark figure of how much it costs us to do an election. And I would just also indicate that the city does not, would be responsible for paying for that if it were just a city issue that were on the ballot.
And I think that's the point that I guess we're trying to look at, if currently our charter, if we are unable as a council to make a decision on an appointment, then a special election would need to be held at the cost of $100,000 plus. But this allows these changes, and we're not talking about, you know, the regular election and, you know, filling two or three seats for full terms, we're just talking about filling a seat for whatever's left on the term, one seat. This proposal would stretch it about every three months, allow for an election at no cost to the city. The people would have the opportunity to come out and vote, and we'd be able to fill that seat, if council could not make that appointment.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I think what we're really addressing, though, is changing the charter. We're changing, to change charter language that has served well for a what-if basis. And I guess from my colleagues, if someone here could answer what this pressing need is all about, because I'm not figuring it out. In all this time, we've talked about the number of resignations, we've talked about the appointments that have been made, but is someone here having to resign suddenly, and that we're not aware of it? The hypothetical that came up before came up as work-related, yet I'm looking at retired folks, or people who have the ability to arrange their hours around this Monday meeting, as some of us who have that flexibility to do. Is this something that's pressing with this body now? We're shortly out from an election with three people who are running, I'm imagining, to fill a four-year seat. I'm sitting here looking at people who are term limited, except for me, and I'm not planning to resign my seat. So I don't understand this quick run to get this on, because this may happen. It hasn't happened in the history. I have great confidence, unless someone here wants to share some information, that we're not facing a resignation at this time. This language is problematic, a charter language with, well, let's just go with what we've come up with. The sample primary, even with all of the references that we came from Mayor Protem, the primary still says "primary." It is a problematic phrasing to place into our charter. It's not the state election timing, it's nothing else. I think that this is just a race to get something on this ballot for a contingency that's not happening now. I think far better to wait and look carefully at this language before we jump over.
Yes, Councilwoman Brumfield?
In response to that, I don't know that we're racing so much, but, because this has been talked about and brought up several times, it just didn't come in a formal presentation to us. The second thing is this, I don't believe the changes of the charter should take place after the fact. I think that that is reacting instead of acting. There's been, as shared by our council members, three resignations. However, we live in a different society. We live in highly mobile society. We have an economy that is taking people out of the state, away, job layoffs, lots of things are going on that are different. And addressing something before the fact, I don't know that we, any one of us should say, or needs to say, well, we need to do this because I'm planning. That is a reaction. This is about looking at what we have in place right now, understanding that perhaps it could be better, it needs to address the issue before the issue happens. And now it's in place, it saves the city money, should there be a resignation, and it allows the people to make the selection. And as we go through our charter, we're going to see things that we have to look at, review, and change. And that's what this is about, and if we don't have it now, and don't put it on the ballot now, then it will be another year or two. I think we talked about delaying it again, and who's to know that the next time we look at it again, there's not going to be two, or three, or four more amendments of sorts? We don't know that.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Howarla?
Yeah, I think we have some recommendations come out of the Charter Revision Committee. There's one item with respect to presidential primaries that's been addressed, that's been mentioned at this table. I would like to see us get something, a resolution on the table, and either fish or cut bait move forward, because I think that the Charter Revision Committee has taken a tremendous amount of effort. They got six of seven people to show up, the only one who couldn't show up was for a healthcare matter, and I think they put the effort in, and we owe it to them to either proceed or to not proceed, and I think we need to make that decision. And knowing this council, quite frankly, I believe that we are of the mindset that we're going to do one or the other, and I don't believe it serves us any good to continue on and on and on, so.
So we have a series of resolutions that are before, so we have to take each one separately. And Mrs. Bloom, am I correct that in order to place an item on the ballot for a charter amendment change, it takes five votes of city council, five affirmative votes of city council to put that item on, correct?
That is correct, Mayor, and I was going to bring that up, so you'll be with me.
Further discussion? Would someone like to move the first resolution then?
Sure. Mayor Eisenbacher?
Yes. Councilman Eisenbacher?
Resolved that Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November 3, 2009, city general election. Charter amendment proposal 09-03. Proposal to amend the date an elected official must resign from office when desiring to run for a city-elected office, except to succeed oneself. Shall section 6.2G be amended to establish July 1 as the date by which a city-elected official must submit a letter of resignation in order to run for a city-elected office, except to succeed oneself, in place of the current requirement that such letter of resignation be filed no later than the deadline for filing his or her candidacy for election to that office with the city clerk. Note, passage of this proposal is necessary for the passage of proposals 09-04, 09-05, 09-06, 09-07, and 09-08. Defeat of any one or more of the proposals 09-03, 09-04, 09-05, 09-06, 09-07, and 09-08 will result in a defeat of proposals 09-4, 09-6, and 09-7.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as presented. Discussion? I have a question for the clerk. What is the date that the letter must be filed now? This is asking for a July 1 date.
For, I'm not quite sure what your question is.
Such a letter be filed for the filing of a candidacy. Now, folks have to, would have to file a letter by when?
Right, right now, it's 100 days out, so for this particular election in November, it was July 27.
Okay. So this would be sooner-
About 20 days.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Beltramee, discussion?
We have to resign now, as of the filing date, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I asked what that date was, like, for this election, it would have been July 28.
Yeah, Mayor?
Right, thank you. Councilman Eisenbacher?
Yeah, the intent behind this one, if I interpret our election committee and everyone properly, is to make sure that the community recognizes that there will be an open seat, so you can't have a last-minute resignation on the last minute of the last data file.
Further discussion?
I'm just-
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just clarification, again, when that letter is submitted now, in excess of 100 days, that will end that person's ability to serve during the remainder of that term, is that?
No. The letter of resignation, we need a clarification from the attorney, yes?
That actually comes into the tie-bar language, because this is tie-barred to other provisions, allowing for, one of the other proposals that's later down the line is allowing for the irrevocable letter, which would allow for persons to serve until that next person is ready to assume office, but this-
This piece, written as itself-
Right.
Would indicate that would be complete.
That is correct, and if I may, just to, I hate to complicate things even more than what we have already, but it is possible that this provision could stand alone, you would not need to tie-bar it, but again, if that happens, you have a July 1 date where the person is resigning, and there is no opportunity to serve out the remainder of the term, unless it's tie-barred. So the tie-bar language, council has the option, and as it was currently read, it does include the tie-bar language, which would mean that all of the provisions would have to pass in order for any of them to be implemented into the charter.
In order to have the language not be tie-barred, we would take out the note section?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Revote, Mrs. Pilata?
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltramee? Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
Motion fails, it takes five votes.
Correct.
Okay. Section 2, 6.21, irrevocable letter of resignation. I need to ask a question, Mrs. Bloom. Since the first item failed, do we need to go through each of these?
Well, they're, it certainly is the preference of council, I mean, you know, the first item is tie-barred to the other ones, but if you just wanted to change, if you wanted to allow for an irrevocable letter of resignation, you could do that.
Without the tie-bar.
Without the passage of 09-03.
It's council's pleasure, do you wish to go through each of these? Do you wish to have the irrevocable letter of resignation on for, without the tie-bar?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Again, I will have problems with this because of the wording as it now is sitting there, primary elections.
Yes, again, this does refer to primary election, and several of us spoke against that because of-
So I would consider it in the future, at this time, I'll be voting over.
Okay. Mrs. Bloom, did you want to talk to me?
Just if council is inclined to move this one forward, you could possibly correct it by adding the word "and" "August" in front of "primary." So if that's council's preference, that might be an option.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
I, I like the idea of an irrevocable letter of resignation, and I think that allowing that, although that's, I notice there are members of the Charter Revision Committee that don't, I like that idea, and I like the idea that it could be set forward in the future for those who want to resign from office, or need to resign from office, to file that letter on July 1. For, well, the date right now, it would give the three weeks' notice, but it would be three weeks that they'd still be allowed to serve.
The wording, though, that is presently before us, does not allow for that, does not mention the July 1-
It would not.
Date.
It would not. It would be something that someone would do as a courtesy, which right now, that courtesy isn't even allowed.
Yes. But what I'm asking is, would it be more efficient to have a date set forward, so that folks would know?
No, I think that, I think that allowing for an irrevocable letter of resignation allows it for any circumstances, not just the July 1 circumstance, and so I would not put a date certain in there. I think it would cover Councilman Eisenbacher's concern, and the Mayor Protem's concern about lifestyle changes, if you allow that vehicle for resignation in the charter.
So then if that-
Right now, we don't have it.
Yeah, if that resolution is brought forward now, we would need to take out the section that talks about tie-baring, and just have the wording as-is with that note section removed. Is that correct, Mrs. Bloom?
Just one additional caveat, although you can do the irrevocable letter of resignation, you also need to do something with the power to appoint, the 30-day power to appoint. So 09-05 would need to be tie-barred with 09-
09-05?
04.
Just a minute. Just a minute. Okay. Excuse me. So there would have to be wording of tie barring, but it would be a shorter version, correct?
If I may just explain, the current charter allows for when there is a vacancy, which is the person is not able to serve.
Right.
So the vacancy would not occur until after the letter of resignation's effective date.
Right.
So because of that, because there is that 30 days, you'd have 30 days afterwards to appoint. So you'd have to tie bar that provision. I believe that's why Ms. Bartholomew had placed it in this order and tie barred that language.
Okay. So now I need to ask another question. Since we would be changing the wording, do you need time to reword it for us? I know we don't have time to send it back to Charter Revision and have it come back here and make it to the ballot, or do it?
Actually, Mayor, we really hope, it's time crunching now even to have it on tonight's agenda in order to meet the deadlines for the absentee ballots and the printing and things like that. We can still do it with due diligence if language is approved tonight, or even, council could set a special meeting for later on this week if that's the desire of council. But it really does need to move forward very quickly in order to get on the November ballots.
We couldn't do it on the 31st when we have a meeting. It has to be done before the 31st.
I cannot guarantee that it would be done in sufficient time to get it out and on the absentee ballots before they need to be distributed.
Okay. Thank you. Do you need time this evening to rewrite the wording is what I'm asking? Should we go to another item and come back to this item to give you time to do that?
Just might fly, on the fly, you know, if you wanted to place the verbiage "in August" before the word "primary," I'm sorry, no, that's not on this one.
That would be in the second.
No, the tie bar language is actually there. The only thing that you'd really need to eliminate would be the 09-02, I'm sorry, 09-03.
You're speaking of the item that we're on, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the tie bar language is in the note.
Proposal 04.
The tie bar language is in the note, and it references all of the other provisions.
Right.
So you would just eliminate 09-03.
Well...
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Eisenbacher?
I have a question to clarify. Is it the intention to not submit the letter in advance resigning? Or is it the intention of the persons who voted against it to not have the option for an election? Because if we still want to have notice to be, like, say you want notice that I'm going to run for mayor in the next election, my term's not up. Do you want that notice that the seat's going to be open for a two-year term in advance or on the last data file? Because the portion we just turned down is what makes it in advance.
Well, the problem deals with the tie barring and having all of them pass. I'm still not convinced that the voters are going to do that, so I don't think it's worth it to put them in the ballot.
You got me answered there.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
I don't have a problem with the letter being in advance. I really don't. My problem, as I look at this quite honestly, is we have two charter amendments already on the ballot, and then we have six that are tie barred together. But those other two aren't. So we've got a mismatch, and I'm really concerned about all of them failing, all of them passing when I think, and do the math with me, the calendar math with me. We pass these tonight. Some of them are tie barred together, some of them are independent. We want to put out an educational piece. The educational piece won't come back to us in two weeks. That's unrealistic. It will come back to us, or if it comes back to us in two weeks, we'll have changes, and it won't be final until the 14th. The 14th of September, that means that we approve it, and it has to be printed, mailed, and delivered within an eight-day period for the absentee ballot people to get it, to have it for a week to study before their absentee ballots come. I think that the math on this is unrealistic, and so I'm trying to, in essence, pick and choose. What can I live with? And I'm still concerned about tie barring some and not the other. I think that creates a very difficult situation with eight, at the very least, amendments on the ballot and very short notice to have these discussed in public. That's my concern.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Howarla?
I think that makes sense. And I would add that my opinion is that I don't see these, if they get approved, whatever gets approved, I just don't see there needing to be a lot of revision at this table. And I'm more than happy to give staff the power to do that. We have a lot of other things that we can deal with. I have faith that they can design an informational piece that is unbiased and that serves the purpose. That's all I'm saying, to streamline things.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
The only thing that I would say in response to Councilwoman Beltrame's concern regarding tie barring all of them, and some are tie barred, some are not, is that we're not guaranteed at any election that there's not going to be some charter revision proposals where some are tie barred and some are not. And I think it's more about the content. Do I agree with the content, or do I not? Whether it's tie barred, whether it's not. We could, our next election, we could be facing the same thing. And I don't think we should delay doing something based on that. I agree with Mayor Protem Howarla that in putting together an educational piece, it doesn't necessarily have to come back to us for approval, but it can be streamlined and sent out. I'm just, I think we need to look at the content of what is here, and Councilwoman Kerwin has clearly shared that she's not in agreement with the content. If you're in agreement with the content, we need to move ahead. If you're not in agreement with the content, then you vote no. But the others, I really believe that that will work itself out. It's working itself out as we speak.
I'm still having problems with language that refers to a primary election, so I'd be opposed to that. I'm also opposed to having this many items tie barred in order to have a letter. I'm not opposed to folks submitting a letter which would actually give the public more notice that there be a seat open. I just think that with all that's going on, plus the school election on the same date, I think that it's just way too much to put on there all at the same time. Why I'm opposed to it. Council, I need to ask a question. Since this is usually the time we take a break, do you want to finish this item and then take your break, or do you want to take the break and then come back to the item?
Let's take a break.
Want to take a break? Okay. Well, we had several request it, so we'll take a 10-minute break, come back to the item at 9:17.
Well, you're really good. The lesson learned tonight is that the E6 people should have signed up for E6. We're back in session. We do have a choice here. We are in the middle of E8, but we could go to E6. Look at how many people are here on E6. Just planting the seeds here.
Mayor, I can-
Yes, Councilmember Eisenbacher?
I'd like to make a resolution to table discussion on E8 until we can come- oh, sorry. First motion to suspend our- the rules of the City Council.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming that we suspend the rules. Discussion, the vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Now, Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I'd like to table discussion on item E8 until after the resolution of item E6.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini that we table the rest of E8 until the resolution of item E6. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes, and so we move to item E6. And I'm sure that all these historians learned their lesson. The history won't be repeated. They'll be signing up. And we're on E6, and Brent, you came from that side.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. As you are aware, the City of Troy is proposing to expand the facilities at the Troy Museum in this part of Village. Thank you.
Or we could just look at the hard copies and... We could do it in an old-fashioned way.
There's a number of improvements that are proposed as part of the expansion project. I'm not going to go over all of them in detail, but just very briefly. Proposing to relocate the historical home in this area up to the northern corner. Relocate the Barnard House here to this location. Locate the historic barn and the visitor center here. Add in addition to the museum building. Add a access drive and parking to along the northern property line here. And along the eastern property line over here. Lorraine Campbell, the museum manager, made a detailed presentation to City Council on this expansion project May 18th. She also made a detailed presentation to Planning Commission June 2nd. She is here this evening to answer any questions you may have. The consultant team is also here this evening representing Johnson, Johnson, Roy, and Hopkins Burne, Burne Design Studio. The landscape architect and architect of the project, respectively. They're also here to answer any questions that you may have. The Planning Commission recommended preliminary site plan approval on July 28th, 2009 at a regular meeting. They also recommended an 82-space parking reduction as part of the site plan. The zoning ordinance requires 202 spaces. They are proposing to provide 120 spaces. The zoning ordinance does provide the Planning Commission with the ability to reduce parking as part of site plan approval. Given that this is a public project, obviously, City Council is the approving authority for the site plan. So therefore, we've made a determination that there will also be approving authority for the parking space reduction. So that is in the resolution as part of the site plan approval. There is a revised action report and revised site plan in front of you this evening. I'd like to briefly explain what that is all about. The Planning Commission recommended site plan approval conditional on the applicant, which is the City of Troy, providing an eight-foot wide sidewalk along the north side of Waddles and the west side of Livernoy. The zoning ordinance requires that applicants show eight-foot wide sidewalks along major thoroughfares. The site plan that was provided to you initially did not include an eight-foot wide sidewalk along Livernoy. It included it along Waddles without along Livernoy. And that was very confusing. It was pointed out to us by a council member. Now, during the preliminary site plan approval review stage, the engineering department indicated that it would be an economic hardship to construct an eight-foot wide sidewalk along the west side of Livernoy, given the fact that next to the existing five-foot wide sidewalks, there's a series of utility poles that would have to be relocated. That's extremely expensive to do so. So for this reason, an eight-foot wide sidewalk may not be ultimately constructed along the west side of Livernoy. Technically, this determination should be made during the engineering review stage prior to final approval. It was inappropriate to kind of vet that at this time. The report was amended, revised, excuse me, to reflect this change. The site plan was revised. It was provided to you this evening with an eight-foot sidewalk along the north side of Waddles as well as the west side of Livernoy. And that was placed in front of you this evening. And that is my very brief presentation on this item. City management recommends approval of the preliminary site plan as revised in this place in front of you this evening with the eight-foot wide sidewalk shown on the north side of Waddles and the west side of Livernoy. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
So you're saying eight foot on the west side of Livernoy? Or you're saying five foot on the west side of the road?
There is an existing five-foot wide sidewalk now.
I know, right.
They are required, all applicants for preliminary site plan approval are required to show an eight-foot wide sidewalk along major thoroughfares.
Okay. My question to you is, would the three feet come from the property between the sidewalk and the street? Or into the parking lot of the party store?
It's typically required, the sidewalk typically begins a foot off the property line, a foot within the right of way, and goes toward the center of the road. So typically, that's where the expansion is made.
So it's going to go toward the road?
In all-
Which means the eight-foot sidewalk's going to be right alongside Livernoy.
Keeping in mind-
Because there's no room there.
Keeping in mind, there's also a proposal to make some improvements to Livernoy. There's a reconstruction project upcoming. So the bottom line is, Madam Mayor, is that they're required to show the eight-foot wide sidewalk as part of preliminary site plan approval. It was not shown, and they now meet the requirements in the zoning ordinance.
Can we waive that requirement and go with the five foot?
The city engineer does that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
And that's determined during the engineering review prior to site plan approval. So it follows preliminary site plan approval.
Okay. All right.
Your Honor?
Thank you, yes.
I believe the outcome may be a five-foot sidewalk.
Okay.
Right.
Because, you know, in fact, they're just down there doing the four corners and fixing the thing. And I'm thinking, and now we want to go to eight foot. I'm not in favor of having sidewalks right next to where the traffic is traversing. I think there should be a little bit, and there's very little space now. And it certainly couldn't come from the parking lot at the party store because they have very little room as it is now. And he's just renovating.
And that's one of the considerations the city engineer makes during final site plan approval on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. And other questions? Councilwoman Beltramini?
I'm glad to see the revised plan, that we're, our plans meet our own ordinances. I can always think that's a good idea. I want kind of a value question now. As the city engineer reviews plans, how often is economic hardship allowed as an excuse for not meeting requirements? Do you have any idea?
I can say that in most instances, when applicants show eight-foot wide sidewalks, they construct eight-foot wide sidewalks. There's very few instances where they do not. I can't answer that question. It's, it's, go ahead.
Is it your sense that anyone who had to move three telephone or power poles would probably get the same consideration?
I was trying to think of, I know there's some examples. I've been here seven years. There are a limited number of examples where the applicant did not put in eight-foot wide sidewalks and put in five-foot wide sidewalks. And I was, I tried my darndest to think of what those were, and I couldn't. I wish someone from engineering were here now. Typically, I mean, obviously, safety is the number one concern. Economic hardship, I don't know where that falls down in the spectrum. But again, it's on a case-by-case basis based on engineering design principles.
I'm just concerned that we walk the walk. That's all. Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
And I also understand that there's going to be more work on Livernoy. I think it's always a shame when someone goes through all the trouble to do something and then have it undone again. And we've seen that happen before. So that long-range view that Livernoy is going to be addressed elsewhere, I think that's really the way to do it. I do appreciate the responsiveness of staff. I'm pleased to see this document here tonight. I would, Madam Mayor, like to move the resolution as printed.
Okay.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
And Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. And-
Good luck.
I know you learned your lesson. You're welcome. Okay, we'll return to item E8. And my question to Councilwoman Beltramini and Councilwoman Eisenbacher and Mrs. Blum. I saw that you were heard at work trying to resolve the situation. I don't know if you did or did not. Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
Since I seem to be the crooks of the matter.
The crook in the mess?
Well, no, I, I am, I like the idea, as I said, of a letter of resignation for some date certain. I like that option in the charter. I like the language that was proposed. The three of us after discussion were concerned that, you know, offering that option and even tiebarring it just to the secondary one that says those would be, those vacancies filled by council would then be elected by the people at an August or a November election. Our concern is, and mine in particular, that there probably is a reason the city clerk tiebared six of these things together. And to not do it that way might be half-baked and get us in more trouble than we started. So I don't know how to offer us that option unless I'm willing to put six tiebared items on the ballot. And I can say "I" with some confidence because both the mayor and Councilwoman Kerwin have said absolutely not. I don't have their concerns about the primary election, but I am concerned about that many different kinds of things on a single ballot, so... I'm sorry.
So with that statement, I conclude that there's no sense in us bringing forward any more of these items this evening. Is that correct, Mrs. Blum? Correct?
Certainly, it is your preference.
Because it takes five votes.
Yeah, it does take five votes. That is correct. And the language does tiebar, the language that is proposed does tiebar the proposals together. And the reason for that is because there are several provisions that once you have one in there, it will affect other provisions. So that's why the tiebarring is necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor Jim Howard?
I would like to go through all of these items.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Well, the item that we postponed action on is not on this agenda and could be handled after we finish these items because it was postponed from the previous meeting, and the language we were given was not exact. So if the mayor pro temp wants to go through them all, and then I'll have another suggestion.
Which one was that, Councilwoman Beltramini?
2G, 6.2G.
6.2G?
The one we already defeated.
Right.
As part of this package.
Right.
So I guess I'm just stating the case. I'm going to come back.
Okay.
We can go through all these.
All right. Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Jim Howard?
I don't follow the line of reasoning why the irrevocable letter of resignation can't be done. These have to be tiebared because they become mandatory. For example, you could still have the irrevocable letter of resignation, but what's going on in Charter Amendment 5, for example, deals with what happens if there's a vacancy in office that doesn't meet that requirement. For example, if somebody were to die in office because they couldn't provide an irrevocable letter of resignation to say that they planned to die on a certain date, it's not practical. And also allowing for circumstances when somebody needs to leave office and can't provide that advance notice. Barring the passage of, or even the placement and the passage of Charter Amendment 5, then the default is what exists right now, which is, the council has the right to appoint. And if they don't appoint, then it defaults to that election. So I'm not really sure what, I mean, these items have been before us. This is at least the second time we've seen them now, and for any of these, the third or the fourth time. So I'm not really sure I follow that line of reasoning. I'd like some explanation.
From whom?
Anybody who came to that conclusion.
I indicated that my objection was having them, this many items that are tiebared, on the same ballot with two that we've already approved and having the school election at the same time. And I'm also opposed to having the wording of a primary election. That was, I already indicated that.
But I, Mayor, if I might, it's my understanding that the concerns came from the city attorney, Councilwoman Beltramini, and Councilman Eisenbacher. I don't follow that line of reasoning, and I was hoping that one or all of them could explain that line of reasoning.
Oh, okay, yes. Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, if I may just start out, and I don't know that I'm going to get to Mayor Pro Temp Howard-Lack's concerns, but let me just start out by saying that initially, when this was given to us, the direction of the member of council that brought it to our attention was that we wanted to avoid special elections. So that was what the initial concern was. The intent was to avoid special elections. And in researching that, we discovered, the city clerk and I discovered, that there were several other provisions that would need to be taken care of in the charter in order to make sure that there were no special elections that would be required for a resignation. Another factor was the irrevocable letter of resignation, which, again, there's nothing that prohibits that. There's nothing that expressly allows that for cities. But what happens is that we have another charter provision that says that if there is, that you can't, that City Council has a right to fill the vacancy. They have 30 days to fill any vacancy. You don't have a vacancy until the person is not sitting. So the irrevocable letter of resignation would have an effective date as of the November election, for example. So you couldn't, that 30-day period to a point wouldn't start until that November election had passed, and then you'd have 30 days. So it was really defeating the whole purpose of avoiding the cost of having the taxpayers pay for an election on one of those other dates. pay for an election on one of those other dates. So that's why there are so many tiebars. It's like peeling an onion, and every time we tried to do something, there were several other provisions that, that needed to be addressed. As far as, is doing an irrevocable letter of resignation, you can do that now. The problem is that council has thirty days after a vacancy to appoint a member to council. So again, that's, that's the problem, and, and that's why there needs to be at least some tiebarring to accomplish what we thought were the goals of council.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Horlech?
And so I guess my point would be, as a follow-up, do we need to accomplish all of those goals at the same time? Because I think we can boil it down to a couple of things. One, somebody has to leave office and they're appointed through, and they're appointed through the end of the, the term, which is being filled. And that could pass by many regularly scheduled elections. That is what's addressed in proposal 09-05. The other issue that is also being addressed, and I ask you, do we need to address both of these issues? Is somebody who resigns with an irrevocable letter of resignation in advance of an election. This charter amendment would allow the council, or would allow the city government by default to have an election. So there's a seamless transition of hire. Do we need to do both of those things at the same time? In order to reduce the number of tiebars, perhaps you could do one of those things. And then later on down the road, if it's still the intent of this council or whoever's on this council at the time to proceed with that, then you can do so. But my intent, and I'm only one of seven of us here, is to reduce the likelihood that there, that one or more of us on here isn't appointed as opposed to an elected official. And so I, I'm happy doing one of these things or all of them, but I don't think they all need to be done at the same time if we're concerned about having too many things tiebarred.
I think that was Councilwoman Beltrame's point, that she wanted to go back and revisit 6.2G alone without the tiebarbing. Is that, am I, I'm sorry.
That was, no, that was, that's after the discussion of this. Question for the attorney, if I might, please, Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrame?
Because irrevocable letters of resignation are legal, so to speak. You say we have that ability now. However, the charter states that council shall attempt to fill that vacancy at the meeting directly following receipt of the letter, not after the resi- after the vacancy occurs. And so my question is, in a case of someone saying, "This is August. I know by the first of January I won't be sitting at this table." Does council have to, does the thirty-day clock start ticking in August? Or does it start ticking in January? Because the, the direct language of the charter is at its next regular meeting following receipt of the letter.
Mrs. Bloom?
You have to give me just a minute here.
Yeah, that's fine, it's very chunky.
The, the problem is the use of the word vacancy. And there is, it's, it's filling vacancies in elective office. And the, the problem is that you don't have a vacancy until the person is not serving. So the fact that a person is a designee for, you know, you, you could, you, you don't, you don't get the opportunity, council does not get the opportunity to appoint a new person until there is a vacancy under the charter language. Is that right?
So Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Eisenbacher?
So getting back, I think, to Councilman Horlech's point, isn't it, even if we have the letter of, and the attorney's point, even if we have the letter, council member knows, "I'm going to be leaving. Here's my advance notice." Under our current language, we can't fix it with an election, even if the timing matches. You have to wait till that person has vacated their seat. Then you can act on their vacancy.
That the vacancy supersedes the resignation as far as importance?
The, the vacancy is, is what is controlling, yes.
And that goes back to the original concern, that if you have advanced notice, there's no mechanism. This adds the mechanism. And I must say, we've had some rather complicated ballot proposals for our residents in the past. And we know we have a very intelligent electorate at interpreting these ballot amendments.
Madam Mayor? Well, we haven't had ones that have been tiebared in I don't know how many years. I don't remember, uh, do you recall, Mrs. Bloom?
We, we may have had some tiebarring when the election consolidation laws were changed. I, I can't recall off the bat, Madam Mayor, but I, we may have had them at that point.
I don't remember that wording about the note, you know, that it has to be, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't remember.
Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Kerwin, was that you?
Yes. Um, and it's not a question of, of the electorate. It's, it's our obligation really to wordsmith it as, just as finely as we can. And to look at those contingencies, and I'm not convinced that we have, that's the concern. And if someone up here would help me understand what the urgency is, is there in fact someone who's planning to resign that we're facing all of these? So that we don't have that opportunity to go back and look at the contingencies and get the language right before we place it on a ballot for our citizens? That's what I'm missing. This is acting as if, oh my gosh, we'll have a special election tomorrow. We don't have a vacancy. We, I feel frankly that this body could certainly make an appointment in the interim. So this push of, oh my heavens, the sky is falling, I don't understand. I wish someone would explain that to me.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Horlech?
You can't make an appointment in tur- in the interim, that's what it says. You, you make an appointment for the duration, not for the interim. And that, that's the issue that, I don't know how many times I have to tell you this, but it's in here in 0905. And you wanted this to go to the charter revision committee. It did. And, and here it is. It's gone through proper channels. And the whole point was to have it on a November election. And we asked seven people, six of whom could make it, because one couldn't, obviously, he was ill, to meet. We did it urgently. And you may have been a minority, I'm a minority often too, and I moved forward with a decision and accepted. And that's the decision that was made by the, as the supermajority of this council to last meeting. They did what we asked them to do. It's here. And the question is, do we hold up our end of the bargain? We asked them for language so that it could be placed on a November ballot. Don't you think that if they knew that we weren't gonna act on it, that they may have wanted additional time as well? They did what they were told to do.
Further comments?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Does anyone have the actual new charter language that would be section 6.2.1 A, B, and C?
Should have been in the last council package, and I can...
We didn't get it with this tonight? Six point?
Two, eight.
Two? Isn't it?
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman?
I may be wrong, but I'm looking at the, what was placed on our table. The pages aren't numbered, but it's vacancies in elective office by letter of resignation, ballot proposal 0904. And it's, uh, section 6.2.1 A, B, and C. Is that what you're asking about?
Now, what, what will the new charter language be?
Says proposed charter language.
It says to add new provisions, 6.2A, B, and C, to allow elected officials, but I see no nomenclature for that.
I, I'm seeing the language. It's, uh, I can't, I guess if I go back, it's one, two.
Five pages from the end.
Third page from the back.
Thank you. That's too much information. Thank you. This goes back to my question of before.
What, I can't hear you, Councilwoman Beltrame?
Thank you. This goes back to my question of before of the city attorney, which started this whole thing, is these April and July dates, I'm not sure they cover all circumstances.
Mrs. Bloom? Just, you're speaking to the, the language here in 6.2.1, proposed charter language. It mentions July 1st and April 1st?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't mention any of the other dates?
Well, actually, you can't though expressly, I mean, somebody could resign at, at a different point in time, and then that would default to what we have under the existing char- charter. So, I mean, the goal is to try and avoid special elections wherever we can. And that's what the language was drafted for. But there may be circumstances where you can't do that. And because of that, we had to have that default position in there. So that would have been C.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Also, in my, my discussions with, um, with our clerk, Mrs. Byssell, I mean, July 1st allows the ninety days for the federal elections and the hundred days for city elections to both be covered because it's a hundred and twenty total, which allows enough time, no matter what the circumstances are, for a resident to know and file. And July 1st is a lot simpler than saying a hundred in one year, ninety in the other year.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Horlech?
And furthermore, this language only allows for August even year and November odd or even year elections because it says here under the new section six, the new section 6.7, that council shall fill, if all of these things were to pass.
6.7?
Shall fill vacancies of an elected office that are declared vacant pursuant to section 6.2 within thirty days, but majority voted, the remaining members of the council, said appointee shall hold office until the successor takes place, the election, which shall be the next available election date. So, I mean, I think, I think if all of these were to pass, it would make for a very clean and efficient, um, way of handling a vacancy, whether somebody resign, die, or become incapacitated.
Further discussion? Would we be proposing to send out the, um, new charter language in the, in the informational brochure as well as the? I see what would go on the ballot. What about the additional language that was here?
For every, Mayor, uh, for every submittal, you have to have the existing charter language, you have to have, um, the question, and you have to have the language if it were to pass.
Okay.
So that will be submitted to the state for their review. That is required for us to do, and we always, we always do that. And generally, in the past, we have also done that in any informational brochures that we would send out.
So it would have to be, all of this information would have to be on the ballot and in the informational brochure?
Um, wouldn't have to be, but we certainly would recommend that you include the language in the informational brochure.
Further discussion? We're still on what to do with this item.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Starting to feel the way that Councilman Horlech stated earlier about we should just go through the rest of these. And then if it, if it's not, if, if after this additional explanation and discussion, if the items are not palatable, then we, we move on with rewrite. But take them as is for now. If I may, the second one resolves that the Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November 3rd, 2009 city general election. Charter amendment proposal 09-04. Proposal to amend the Troy City Charter, section 6.2, to add new provisions, 6.2.1 A, B, and C, to allow elected officials to resign from city office by an irrevocable letter of resignation and establishing timeframes for placement of the resulting vacancy on the next available election. Shall section 6.2 be amended to elec- to add new provisions under 6.2.1 A, B, and C, which allow elected officials to resign by an irrevocable letter of resignation effective no later than the date the successor takes office, which shall, which will commence the first Monday after the election, or as stated in the irrevocable letter of resignation? Note, passages of this proposal is necessary for the passage of proposals 9-04, 9-06, and 9-07. Defeat of any one or more of the proposals 9-03, 9-04, 9-05, 9-06, 9-07, and 9-08 will result in a defeat of proposals 9.9-04, 9-06, and 9-07. Yes or no?
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher?
Is, uh, did we mean to s-?
Wait, you didn't have a second.
But d- did you want to strike 9.3?
I'm, did I miss one? I'm starting to strike.
No, you read 9.3. Did you want it, do you want 9.3 struck, striking? We don't know because if we're gonna go back to that item. Over here. Oh.
I, I meant to read it as written.
As written?
As written.
The three?
I should have said as written. I was just reading it for the sake of clarity to our audience. Point, uh, point of clarification?
Yes.
The, um...
Mayor Protem Horlech?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the other thing is that first number, 0904, should actually be 0905. Because this is proposal four. But, yeah, at least in this order. Yes.
Support?
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Bloomfield. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Beltrame?
At the very least, I would like to see us amend 6.2.1C by inserting August between next and primary in the last line.
Support?
Where, where is that in this item?
Uh, it's three pages back on the original.
Councilwoman Beltrame? In the, in the?
In the actual charter language.
In the charter language, okay. In the charter language?
Everywhere, that's a full print.
Primary, August? Primary. Are you proposing that amendment?
Yes, ma'am, and I got a second.
Who's second? I'm second. Moved by Councilwoman Beltumay, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher, that we amend by inserting the word August in the C item and, uh, which would then read, "An elected official may file a letter of irrevocable resignation prior to April first in even years to allow for the future vacancy to be placed on the next August primary election ballot." Correct? Discussion of the motion. What would occur on an August primary election other than this item, Mrs. Blom? What's already, what could occur on an August ballot?
Uh, mayor, it could be any number of items that, that could be on an August ballot. I mean, again, there are only four dates that any election can be held, so you could have any number of them. As far as who pays for it, it depends on who has the item on there.
But traditionally, we usually have the August primary as a partisan either for nominations for a November election, correct?
There are also nonpartisan issues.
I know, but I'm saying that is the major thing that is on in August, correct?
Generally, that is correct, yes.
Yes, okay. But there could be other items, and some of them could be nonpartisan. Okay, thank you. Again, I, I'm going to express my concern about having this on with, um, elections where there would be people going to a primary from one, uh, party or another. I think that the correct way that was set up originally by the Charter Committee in nineteen fifty-five to have elections in April away from the November elections was correct. And then, when the voters voted to go to November elections, that they indicated it should be on odd years, not on years where we had partisan elections. So I think that this proposal is incorrect.
Mayor?
Yes, uh, Mayor Pretam Haralak?
I really wish I could understand your reasoning, and as an example, if I die on April fifteenth of next year as in filing my taxes at the post office, and the sixes that are still here can't figure out who would replace me, then the charter today says that, says that there's going to be an election in August to, to replace poor me who died filing my taxes. And, um, it's there right now, so I, I guess I just don't understand how you come to that conclusion.
My, I come to that conclusion because I have faith in councils that will be here to be able to do an appointment in that time and so that it would not have to go to the August, um, primary election because I think that they would rather have it resolved that way than have it be on with a partisan election. That's my thinking.
Well, mayor, the last time you had an opportunity to vote to appoint somebody in nineteen ninety-three, you decided to have a, an election in April of nineteen ninety-three. So, I'm not necessarily so sure that, um, you know, and of course, that interfered with the regularly scheduled election.
In August of ninety-three?
Um, actually, in April of nineteen ninety-three is when the election was. And it was actually kind of interesting because we used to have primaries back then in February, and those of us who didn't make it in the February primary could actually file to run for that open seat, so.
And again, it was in a nonpartisan election. It was not an bipartisan election.
Well, actually, there, there's nothing that precludes a nonpartisan election from any partisan election. Likewise, there's nothing that precludes there. For example, if one of our state representatives is, for example, would leave office, the governor would call an election the next regularly scheduled date, which could, if it's going to be in an odd year, it's going to be concurrent with our election. In other words, there, there's nothing that absolutely is going to protect you from that. Well, I just wanted to bring that up, that's all.
We have a resolution to amend on the cable. Are you ready for vote on the amendment? Mrs. Plata on the amendment?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
No.
Mayor Shelling?
No.
Councilmember Beltumay?
Yes.
Groomfield?
Yes.
And Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Amendment passes. We return to the item which is six point two one. As amended.
Cliff?
Yes. Uh, Council, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Haralak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
No.
Mayor Shelling?
No.
Councilmember Beltumay?
Yes.
Groomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
And Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes as amended. Six point seven?
Yes.
Somebody else want to read one?
Please. No one else is jumping forward. Mayor Pretumay?
Go ahead.
Resolved, reading it as printed, inserting the word August anywhere that the word primary occurs in front of the word primary. Resolved that the Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November third, two thousand nine city council election. Charter amendment proposal nine dash oh five. Proposal to amend the Troy City Charter section six point seven to restructure the appointment process of a vacancy in elected office with city council appointing a replacement member until a successor is elected. The successor will be elected at the next regular or primary election.
Prim, August primary election.
Yes, or August primary election. Thank you. Shall section six point seven be amended to direct city council to fill vacancies in elective office pursuant to section six point two until a successor is elected at the next regularly, regular or primary election?
August primary election.
Passage of this proposal is necessary for the passage of proposals nine dash oh four, nine dash oh six, and nine dash oh seven. Defeat of any one or more of proposals nine dash oh three, nine dash oh four, nine dash oh five, nine dash oh six, nine dash oh seven, and nine dash oh eight will result in defeat of proposals nine dash oh four, nine dash oh six, and nine dash oh seven. Yes or no?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Groomfield, that we approve the resolution as read with the insertion of the August date before primary in each section.
Yes.
Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Kirwin?
No.
Mayor Shelling?
No.
Councilmember Beltumay?
Yes.
Groomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
And Haralak?
Yes.
Voting passes, uh, six point seven one.
No one wants to read. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Eisenbacher.
Present the proposal as written, and I don't see the word primary anywhere. Uh, resolved that the Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November third, two thousand nine city general election. Charter amendment proposal nine dash oh six. Proposal to amend the city charter section six point seven to add a provision for electing a successor to fill a midterm vacancy of a city elected official at a regular election. Shall section six point seven be amended to add new provisions designated as six point seven point one to allow for the election of candidates to fill any midterm vacancy created prior to July first and after April first in even years and prior to July first in odd years for the remainder of a city elected office term at the next regular election? Note, passage of this proposal is necessary for the passage of proposals nine dash four. This is, needs to be corrected. Nine dash five. And nine dash seven, right?
Well, it says oh six. Is it supposed to say five?
It is.
Supposed to say oh five, okay. Nine dash five and nine dash oh seven. Defeat of any one or more of proposals nine dash oh three, nine dash oh four, nine dash oh five, nine dash oh six, nine dash oh seven, and nine dash oh eight will result in a defeat of proposals nine dash oh four, nine dash oh six, and nine dash oh seven. Support?
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as read and printed. Um, discussion?
Madam Mayor.
I have a, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Beltumay.
Question for the city attorney, please, or the clerk, or somebody. I, and, and this is my problem, and, and I'm not stupid.
I don't know if it's true.
But I don't understand why we need all of the rest of these. If we've created the ability to create a vacancy through an irrevocable letter, and we've created the ability for council to appoint and then the citizenry to elect, I don't understand why we need the rest of these. I mean, all of the rest of these are basically special circumstances for the umbrella that we've already passed, and, and I think that's adding to my confusion, and I've done this for a month and a half now, and I'm still confused.
Mrs. Blom?
Again, the, the goal is to allow this to happen in such a fashion so that a special election is not required.
But, and, and that's my question, is all vacancies created through an irrevocable letter of resignation, we've added six point two one that says you can do this at the next regular or primary election. So I don't understand if we've created six point two point one, why we need all these others.
My understanding is this is what allows the city to hold an election.
Right.
If we go back to six point seven.
It's two different things. It's, it's, it's two different things. One is to, um, to head. Six point, um, this allows for us to hold the election. The other one just authorizes the whole, um, ability to do the irrevocable letter of resignation. So, um, I think that they're both covered under separate charter provisions, so you need to touch both of those sections. So that's why a separate question is required because under state law, you can only address a question to one charter provision. So you have to have separate questions if you're dealing with more than one provision.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltumay?
So does, by not passing the rest of these, does that put conflict in our charter? Or does it simply irritate the state?
No, it, it's, it's not accomplishing what the goal is. It's not accomplishing the ability to have a special, to, to have vacancies filled at one of our regular elections.
But it expressly states that in six point two point one.
Six point two deals with vacancies in elected office. The elections are covered under a separate charter provision.
But we have added section six point two point one that says in all of these. A is an elected official who wants to run for an office different from the office currently held may file a letter prior to July first to allow for the future vacancy created to be placed on the next regular election ballot. The second one says that allow a future vacancy created to be placed on the next regular election ballot. The third provision says to allow for the future vacancy to be placed on the next August primary election ballot. That, to me, enables us to put those vacancies on a future ballot. I don't, I, I still don't understand.
Yeah, again, again, this is done in a very short timeframe, and, and I want to make that very clear, but, um, and unfortunately, Ms. Bartholomew is not here tonight. But six point two covers vacancies and when an office is vacant. So it's six point two, all of the revisions to section six point two cover when there is a vacancy. How, how to define that, or how, how the vacancy is defined and created. Six point seven talks about how you fill those vacancies. So those are separate charter provisions that we needed to deal with, both of them. So you need to deal with six point two and also six point seven somehow.
Question. Then, then my question is, why do we need anything other than the language that is proposed in section seven? Well, that's the nominations.
Exactly.
I.
Layers of the.
Again, this is why I knew intuitively, I didn't want to go down this road.
Okay, and I need to ask a question. We're on the item which places it at a regular elec, the next regular election, which could be a presidential election, correct?
Yes, it, it could be if that, if the timing were such, yes.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Groomfield?
In listening to Councilwoman woman's, Beltumay's concerns, I certainly understand where she's coming from because it does talk in six point two point one, those three points, it mentions elections, and I, but I also understand what our city attorney is saying in terms of separating them out and categorizing them. Um, but the question that Councilwoman Beltumay asked, I don't know that it got a clear answer, and that question was if six point seven point one was not changed, does that just, does that upset the state? Or does that just create a little bit of, uh, rub in, in the charter of sorts? I didn't, didn't get a clear answer from that.
It creates a conflict with the charter. I mean, it, it's not, you, you have to deal with all of the sections to accomplish what it is that you wanted to accomplish. So, um, it's not just that, you know, we, we wouldn't present it to you if it were just irritating the state.
I, I understand, and, and I see how things can't stand alone, and it's like a chapter of sorts. One chapter talks about vacancy, other talks about, um, the actual election or how, how to fill the vacancy. Okay.
So before us is item six point seven point one. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
In reading six point seven of our charter, it deals with if there's a vacancy, it shall be filled by a majority vote of remaining members of council. And that appointment, and the appointee is to hold office until the Monday following the election at which such vacancy shall be normally filled in section seven point nine. Basically, the unexpired original term. This item allows us to have an election to fill the vacancy. But, again, we've already said in the earlier section to have an election, but like our, our city attorney said, we don't want to have the conflict in the charter. Well, one section says you can fill it by election, but the other one says you shall be filling it by the council. This allows the election for filling the seat.
Councilwoman Beltumay?
I go back to, I, I don't understand why we need this. What the charter says is the Monday following the election at which such vacancy shall be filled as provided in seven point nine. So, maybe we have to fix seven point nine, but again, I'm not sure we do. But again, I'm not sure we do. That's kind of where I am with this. And I'll tell you, I don't want to tie bar six people, six motions. I told you that at the beginning of the evening. And if that's what we end up doing, we're going to end up going back again. I don't understand why, when we've allowed ourselves to put it on a ballot, you can file petitions to do it, why we have to change this section.
Mrs. Blum?
I don't know if Ms. Plata has anything to add. Perhaps she can clarify it. I don't know how else to explain it. This is very complicated, and again, as we went through it, there were just several different layers that had to be dealt with. And if we could do it as simply as what you suggested, we certainly would have proposed it, but we felt it was essential that we have all of these provisions together and that we tie bar them.
If I did notice in the council submittal-
Yes, Mrs. Plata? I can't hear you.
I did notice in the council's submittals for proposal zero nine dash five that the last sentence says, "This amendment is tied barred to all the proposals. However, it may stand alone and be approved without passage of the remaining proposals."
But what I... Again, I go back to, given what section six point seven says, that the election at which such vacancy shall be filled as provided in section seven point nine. This section doesn't talk about... Again, I just don't get it.
Do you have a suggestion of what we should do?
Well, what I think, after looking at all of this, I believe that what this section is designed to do is to not force an appointment. And it allows council to leave a vacancy until the next primary or general election. I think that's what this ultimately is designed to do.
The new section?
And it is my contention that if you've got an appointee, which is what this says, you shouldn't have to change this section. And if I don't understand it, I don't think a two-page educational piece for the general public is going to help. Maybe they're all smarter than I am. I don't know.
Mrs. Blum?
As I understood it, the goal was to have the election whenever possible, but you may need to have an appointment with that as well.
Yeah. And it's my thought that if council can... If council knows there's going to be an election where the people of Troy are actually going to ultimately fill that vacancy for the rest of the term, council can appoint somebody for that to for even six-month period, whatever it would be, until the August or November primary. I think even this council could find somebody to appoint if we had to, you know. So again, I'm back to, I don't understand why we have to do this.
And that's what previous councils did. They just filled that time slot and then-
But the mayor of Portim is right. There were two opportunities for council to fill, and they chose not to. They could not agree. So it happens that way as well.
Yes, Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, and I don't know if this is even going to confuse it more, but another thing that we had to be very mindful of is meeting all of the requirements for advertising, for posting. And, you know, again, you're trying to do that. You're trying to... I mean, that's what we were trying to accomplish. That's why there were so many proposals, is because you have to allow for all of the state mandated timeframes before you can get a person on the ballot. And you have to specifically... For example, if it's a two-year partial term, you have to specifically advertise for that two-year partial term. So you have to have built some extra time into that. So I know it's complicated. It was very complicated in writing it. I don't know how many members, you know, I don't know what the thought is of council. If you want to send us back, we can try and get some of these answers. But we really do have some time restrictions if you want it to be on this November ballot.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Do we know if the clerk is available by telephone at a remote location?
I certainly am happy to try and reach her.
Yeah, I mean, she's the author of much of this. I mean, the layers of the onion that we unveiled-
Absolutely.
As the simple request turned into a complex request. Maybe we could table discussion on this, work on the rest of the agenda, and work on trying to get ahold of the clerk to get the answer.
To get the answer?
To clarify-
Why we need this.
Yeah, clarify exactly why we need this. Because I know in talking through this, she had a very specific explanation for each section. Unfortunately, I can't remember this particular one. And there's a very specific reason why each of these came up in state law, in our charter, and... The goal was to not have six questions. If we didn't have the hundred-word limit on a resolution and the limit on each section, each ballot question can only deal with one section of the charter, it could have been more than a question. But because of those two requirements, it's split into six.
Mr. Zerling?
Your honor, that may be an excellent idea. We can have the IT department put up the speakerphone. In the meantime, we do have some residents in the audience. Mr. Sad Basu is here to make an appeal on our council policy of charging 501(c)(3) room rental rates. We're asking to hear him while we're setting up and trying to get ahold of Ms. Bartholomew.
Yes, that's a J of-
J seven.
Seven.
Seven item. And do we have any other items that were requested? Let me check. No, that was it. We need another-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bell to me.
I would move to suspend rules of procedure to allow us to table this item until we can... And handle other items in the meantime.
Support.
Out of order.
Voted by Councilwoman Bell to me, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher that we suspend the rules in order to take other items out of order, not in order. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Plata?
Mayor Shelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell to me.
Yes.
Groomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Powerlack?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. The only item requested is J seven, and we have an explanation in J seven in writing from the Arts and Rec Director. Do we wish to have the folks speak on the item? Or do we want to have a staff respond to?
Your honor, just a brief overview is that we used to have 501(c)(3) corporations not be charged for the use of the community center. They could meet once a day if they wanted to.
Right.
The applicant now wants to and has been meeting once per week. Our policy has been revised so that the fifty or so 501(c)(3)'s that utilize the community center can do so for free once a month. But more frequently than that, there'll be a fee involved. The applicant, based on his schedule of teaching on Friday evenings, would have to pay about $1,200 per year in room rental fees. And he's requesting that that be waived.
When we made the change to charge, it was part of our budget things when we looked at budgeting for reducing the...
My understanding is that it was part of the revenue generator-
And we made some hard decisions, realizing that there would be groups that were going to be affected by it, and this is one of those groups. I'm just clarifying what occurred.
I spoke with Mr. Basu, you're correct. And he asked to come and make a presentation and appeal to the city council, because I advised him that we could not waive the policy.
Okay. We can hear from him. I just want to advise council that if we start making changes to the policy that would occur, then could occur with any group that was to do the same.
That's correct, your honor.
Thank you. All right, I'll call forward Mr. Basu at this time. He gave us something in writing. Come forward, sir. Yeah, trying to find it here. He gave us a paper with a chart. I know, I'll try and find it. Yes. Was it explained... No, I have... I'm talking about this. Was it explained to you, sir, that the reason we had to go this route is that we were looking at ways to save money in the budget? And that we knew that for groups that this was going to be different than it was previously? But that it was for all groups in that category? Was that explained to you by Mrs. Anderson?
We were, but we want to explain a little bit diff... You know, in a little bit different way, if we are allowed.
Yes.
It'll take only five minutes. I have Dr. Sahah. He's going to present for five minutes. And also after that, Ms. Jones, who is from the Ethnic Issues Advisory Committee. She's going to talk for a couple minutes.
Yes, thank you.
But before that, I would like to say it's a very good time, you know. There are some, you know, difficult times here and some energetic discussions. Some are a little bit non-energetic, maybe. But this, you know, city of Troy is celebrated already. I think they will be completing fifty-four years soon. And our organization, which is Pad Bhavan, have been teaching for twenty-seven years, which is half of that already. And I don't know if anybody else has been doing that in a 501(c)(3) or whatever organization has done that yet. I think the city should be very proud of the thing that they have been sponsoring it for twenty-seven years. And this is not only ethnicity or diversity, it's also education. So that will be our, you know, main point. Dr. Sahah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and the city council members. Some of us possibly should go to bed by now, so tomorrow morning we can serve the city and everything else properly. But I want to thank you very much for allowing me to present this on Pad Bhavan's behalf of why we are requesting to waive the room charges. First, let me explain to you a little bit what Pad Bhavan is and what's its purpose. Pad Bhavan is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit tax-exempt organization. There are many other tax-exempt nonprofit organizations. But the purpose is to teach... A Pad Bhavan is to teach and familiarize the Bengali language and the culture to any interested person at a minimum cost. So it's an educational program. It was established in nineteen eighty-three and is being offered at the Troy Community Center since then, and we are very thankful to that. And this has become very critical now in today's global economy and global market. If we can learn the languages, that might help a lot. Why do students, in this case, if I may say, they join Pad Bhavan? They join Pad Bhavan so that they can communicate with the family members. In my case, in my own family. My wife, she had to learn the language. My kids, they had to learn the language to some extent so we can communicate with our family members back at home in India. So to communicate with family members in Bangladesh or West Bengal, or if somebody has the opportunity to have a foreign assignment, a government assignment in that part of the world, it might help to know the language. It is important to communicate to relatives who are married to the Bengali spouses and to raise children adopted from Bangladesh or West Bengal. The basis of the basic education system in Michigan, the basic education is always provided free or at a minimum cost to the parents, so we do at Pad Bhavan also. In Michigan, all the library services are provided free to the community. We also try to do the same thing at Pad Bhavan. At Pad Bhavan, all activities are performed by individuals who are volunteers at no cost. The only tuition fee that we may have to charge the parents is to buy books and materials. And again, thanks to the Troy Community Center and the city of Troy for allowing us to do, get the room free for so long. The current situation is we have been running this organization for over twenty-six years. We appreciate the opportunity that we have gotten for so long very much. However, in the current economic condition, just like we all are trying to cut our expenses, like you were talking here today, to minimize the number of elections and also to have funds, how to raise money. We at Pad Bhavan are also trying to see how to minimize our expenses. The tuition fee that we pay today, on top of that, if we pay the room rental fee about $1,200 or so per year, our expenses will go up by about 200 percent. That's a lot of increase in a short period of time. We may be forced, in that case, to look at the best option for us. And I hope you would understand that. And what that means, if we can find another place somewhere else where we do not have to pay the room rental fee for this reason, we may have to move. And if we have to move, then for other occasions when we rent the Troy Community Center for social programs, we may not do that either. That may not help the Troy Community Center or the city of Troy either. I don't think we will be very happy. I think at the end of the day, Troy Community Center may also find that it not be the best thing for what we are all trying to do. Therefore, we have a proposal. We request that you understand that we are not just a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. We are an educational institute also. Yes, we teach Bengali language and the culture. We request that you waive the room charges. We also are saying that should that not be possible truly for one reason or the other, you give us at least some time. We are requesting that you consider giving us two years' time. If even that is too long for the city of Troy, you give us an year time. And in return- And in return, we offer to work with you on a voluntary basis wherever we can with the City of Troy. So this is our plea, this is our request. I hope that you consider these requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Belltrini, do you have a question?
Sure.
Doctor, how many students do you have right now? And how many have you averaged over, say, the last five years?
We have roughly currently about twenty. And over the last several years, it may have varied from ten to twenty.
And are they mostly children or a mix of children and adults?
Uh, we had adults also. We had adults who are, uh, came from Czech Republic. We have adults who were, uh, married to Indian, you know, men, yes. We also have had adults where the individual was, uh, is born in a Bengali family, but her husband is Caucasian. And for them, it is beneficial to learn the language, the culture, so that we all can live happily. Because we all are trying to make some adjustments.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Do you want, uh, her to speak?
Yeah, Ms. Jones is going to talk about that for a couple of minutes.
I just would like to make a brief, brief statement. My name is Kelly Jones. I am the chairperson of the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board here in Troy. On behalf of the City of Troy's Ethnic Issues Advisory Board, I would like to express my disappointment in the city council for choosing to charge community groups for the use of occupied space at the Troy Community Center. Groups such as Path Ban enrich our community beyond measure. The school teaches the Bengali language and it is open to the public. Most students are Troy residents who purchase Community Center memberships to utilize those facilities. Path Ban rents space at the Community Center several times a year at a cost that happens to generate revenue for the Community Center. We should be celebrating organizations and encouraging them to stay within Troy community. Path of Ban is very attractive, I believe, for our community. We celebrate the statistic of being the second most diverse city in the state of Michigan. We should be encouraging all free cultural activities within our community. And they are contributing to the City of Troy. I just, I feel personally it's a shame that we was losing groups like this. And I would like you to reconsider their proposal. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilman, uh, Eisenbacher and then Mayor Protem Hauer.
One thing I'd like to clarify is, it wasn't one reason why I believe this decision was made. I think there were two very important factor. The one was cost, but tied in directly with the cost is the num, and then I'm taking, taking this quite clearly from the memo, is the number of nonprofit groups that are meeting in our Community Center has increased to the point where it's difficult for new parks and recreation programs, so the programs that are promoted by the, by the facility management and other new groups, including the nonprofits, to find a space at the, at these peak times. So one thing I'm conflicted with is, how do I choose between one group and the other? Yes, you've been meeting within Troy for a very long time, but it's difficult for me to say, this nonprofit group is more important than this other nonprofit group. So that's why we've tried to set a consistent, a consistent policy, where you get one meeting free per month. Um, we're expecting information back from our, from the Parks Department after this budget year to find out how it's working. If we've still have problems with conflicts and not enough space for everyone to go around, that that was the initial recommendation in order to share the space effectively.
And if I'm allowed to say, um...
Please.
What we are saying, and as Dr. Sahah has presented, should consider us not only a 501(c)(3) organization like others. This is a educational center that has been providing special need for the City of Troy people for a long time. And I guess, uh, you know, I should also mention that Bengali is the sixth largest language, speaking-wise, throughout the world. So, uh, you are supporting that, you know, uh, language and culture to be in this, and this is one of the most diverse city in, in Troy. So that's why our, uh, appeal is including, um, you know, what we are trying to tell you is not only a 501(c)(3) organization that we come here and do some cultural or, or, um, other things, but what we are doing, we are trying to teach them and open up, fa-familiarize them with the culture and the education of that subculture.
Uh, Mayor Protem Hauer, eh?
I'm okay, thanks, I found what I needed.
Okay. I should explain to you that, um, I understand why you're making the request. But I do understand about all of the nonprofit groups within Troy and why we had to make that difficult decision to start charging. I should also let you know that given the budget figures projected for the next five years, we will have even more difficult decisions to make. So I do not see this council reversing itself on a policy where we, we needed to make difficult decisions. We agonized over many of the things that we had to do. Yours was the, for the Community Center, was not the only difficult decision. And, uh, so I, I want you to realize that that was extremely difficult for us, but we had to do it when we looked at all the things that we deal with, with the city. And I, so I want you to understand that. As difficult as it is for me to say that, I'd like to say yes, but, um, I cannot. And I was an educator for thirty-three years, so I do understand very much the benefit of education. And I do applaud you, uh, for what you all have done with education and for the language. I think that's wonderful. And, uh, if you have to go to another, uh, facility in order to do that, uh, teaching, uh, I know that you would do it, uh, with a sad heart because you want to stay with the Community Center. But I also know that you will continue to teach because once a teacher, always a teacher.
I agree with that and would like to, you know, continue that, no doubt about that. But, uh, if we are forced to get out of it, then, uh, we might have very difficult time to continue here. So I would again like to request all of you, all the honorable councilmembers and mayor, then look at it again and please allow us at least for one or two years. And then if you, if you see again, there's a problem, yeah, I can see that it'll continue. I can see, you know, there's a, when there's a problem with, with your own food, then you don't care about what's happening to others. I understand all those things. But we have, we are also facing the same kind of difficulty.
Yes.
And, um, a lot of people, you know, have job and all those things that are happening. So, and also as Dr. Sahah has mentioned, you know, we are jumping into a big, uh, you know, two-hundred percent increase, that's one thing. The other part, as he mentioned, that, you know, there are certain things that city provides, if say, um, they have to provide it. Library, they're gonna say that we're gonna charge the library. Uh, that's a charter by, I think this, maybe Michigan has some say to it. Uh, so all, all we are saying, this is a educational, um, center. And we want you, all of you, really we can, consider it. And I'm sure that you wouldn't find a lot of other organizations who are doing this for the city for that.
Thank you. Mr. Zurlag, you indicated you wanted to say something.
If I may address Sack directly?
Pardon?
May I address Mr. Basu directly?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, I did speak to a property owner of one of the office structures today. And he's going to think about, uh, trying to lend a hand to see if either he or he, or someone that he knows could provide some, uh, space in one of the buildings in Troy. That's currently vacant. Not the entire building that's vacant, but a building that has some vacancies there too. And he'll let me know sometime this week and I can let you know.
Yeah, we'll do that. Definitely, that it would like to continue also, if possible, here. So I'd like to ask you to, you know, give us at least, uh, one more time, one more year time.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Eisenbacher. If no other council members wanted to speak first. And I do share your interest. I've, I've had, spent time in foreign countries and I wish I hadn't lost my language skills from ten and twelve years ago. I'd be in much better shape for dealing with some of my colleagues around the world. I was gonna ask staff if there's any other city facilities. And then hopefully you will pursue other governmental units. I mean, we are still offering and hoping you will take advantage of the, the twelve meetings at no charge each year. That's what we're, we're trying to share with all our community groups.
Yeah, I understand that.
Thank you.
But what we found out that we need to continue every week, otherwise we'd forget. If we do that once a month, we would do it that way. But we, we tried to do that before and it doesn't work. Uh, if you, if they come back one month later, they forget everything.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Belltrini.
Mr. Basu, do, do these classes meet year-round?
Yes.
Okay, so you meet fifty, fifty-two weeks a year?
Fifty-two weeks. So you are giving twelve weeks and we have to do another forty.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Councilwoman Kerwin. I did want to express appreciation to Mr. Zurlag and perhaps there are other people who are viewing at home. I do know that all governmental unities actually are having to look at the true costs of providing, uh, space, um, the custodial costs and everything else that goes into that. And so it is with pain that we've made this decision going forward as a policy group. And I do hope that another option will be out there and available to groups that meet on a weekly basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You have your, your envelope there, sir? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We can't go back to eight yet. We don't have a connection, do we?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't remember, Mayor, I don't remember what the resolution was.
It was to take, um...
Other items.
Other items out of...
Okay.
Out of order. So we can go through the regular agenda while it, and you'll alert us if we get a connection, correct?
I, I will just indicate that I am not able to get ahold of Ms. Bartholomew, but I, when it's the appropriate time, Mayor, I'm gonna give it one more shot. I'm gonna give it one more stab to try and, um, clarify some of this information.
Council, do you wish to go back to E8 then at this time and resolve that? You wanna do the other items? All right, okay. E1 is, uh, city council appointments. And there are student, uh, a student one that is on. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Mayor, I will move that resolution as printed on the agenda.
Second.
Was that?
I second, yes.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hauerlak, seconded by Councilwoman Brumfield, that we appoint, uh, Rigani Shresh as the student representative to the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disability for a three-year, for a one-year term expiring seven, one, twenty-ten. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Belltrini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Hauerlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Shelling?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, nominations for boards and committees for Downtown Development Authority. I have someone who, uh, may be interested. I have to resolve one little matter with that person, so I can't put the name up tonight. Uh, but I, I do want you to know that I've been diligently working on, uh, getting someone in that position. So, city council nominations, um, Mayor Protem Hauerlak?
Mayor, I'm afraid we don't have anybody this evening. I don't.
Yeah, council members, do you have anyone for those slots for Historic District Commission? Parks and Rec? We didn't hear from the school board yet, the youth council. Nope? Okay. So the next, um, agenda. Next is the designation of voting delegates at the annual meeting of the Michigan Municipal League Two Thousand Nine Annual Conference. I resolved that we designate, um, Mary Kerwin. I, I assume, Mary, you're going, aren't you? And Robin?
I am.
Robin, because of your duties as MML president, does it make more sense to have Mary be the delegate and you be the...
It'll work either way.
Okay.
I will let me talk.
You will let me talk. But what would you, what would you prefer on the...
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Last time, um, uh, Councilmember Belltrini did a wonderful job, uh, differing to herself at both times. And I think she would be the primary designate very well.
All right, so I'll move that Councilwoman Belltrini be the, um... Designated representative delegate and that Councilwoman Kerwin be the alternate.
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Brumfield. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Hauerlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belltrini?
Yes.
I may be able to attend part of the time, but I didn't wanna be a delegate 'cause I'm not sure about the, the dates yet. Okay. E4, resolution to revoke an industrial facilities exemption certificate and vacate an industrial development district previously granted and established for grid four communications at two-one-zero-seven Crooks Road.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Belltrini?
I move the resolution as printed to revoke the industrial facilities exemption certificate and vacate the district for grid four communications at two-one-zero-seven Crooks Road.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Belltrini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Hauerlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belltrini?
Yes.
And Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, E5, revisions to policy for naming public places specific to Parks and Recreation Park Naming, Section Thirty-Six Park.
Madam Mayor.
Council, you have a reso...
I do. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby adopts the revised policy for naming public spaces specific to Parks and Recreation as presented and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby direct staff to initiate the process for naming the park in Section Thirty-Six, Milverton.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Belltrini, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Belltrini?
I just wanna congratulate staff and the committee. I think this is a much more inclusive policy and better stated, and thank you very much.
Very clear.
Yes, I agree. Further discussion? Mrs. Palata, the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Hauerlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belltrini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, E7, bid waiver for sole source purchase TSI port account. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
The resolution in our agenda packet... Whoops, wrong item.
E7?
I was getting confused with the, uh, the other item I had questioned. It's on the table, it's fixed. It's F4. Um, I'd like to move the resolution as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Belltrini, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Hauerlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belltrini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
And Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Consent agenda, uh, does anyone have any item they wish exempted?
F4A.
Pardon?
F4A.
F4A? Any others?
F4B, we need the table one.
F4B, the table item?
And the, and the minute, and the minutes are also corrupted.
And the minutes changed, I mean, corrected. Okay. Uh, someone wanna move the resolution with those in?
Yes.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Belltrini, that we approved all the consent agenda items except for F4A, which shall be exempted.
Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howarak.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Mayor Shelling.
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame.
Yes.
Brumfield.
Yes.
Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howarak.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Motion passes. And Councilwoman Beltrame, you wanted F-four-A, which is the home, snowmory removal, home chore program.
And Madam Mayor, I exempted this actually to take an opportunity to congratulate staff that I was pleased to see that, all things being equal, a Troy firm was chosen as the primary contractor. And so I wanted to make sure that they got kudos for doing that. With that, I will move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Mayor Shelling.
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame.
Yes.
Brumfield.
Yes.
Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howarak.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're on to council referrals, aren't any council comments? And do we have council comments? And are we having the short version of council comments now in the minutes, Mr. Zerlag? Do you remember that discussion?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. I like those short answers. Okay, council comments, and then we'll look at reports or things that are there, and then we'll find out what we found out from Mrs. Bartholomew. Or if we did. Or if we didn't, what Mrs. Bloom says. Council comments? None? You wanna go to the famous item of the night, E8? Okay, back to E8. Mrs. Bloom?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. I did try and get ahold of Ms. Bartholomew, and unfortunately, she is on vacation, so unfortunately she was not accessible by herself on. And I would just also indicate that normally, this is a joint product. We work, the clerk's office, the attorney's office, and also the AG's office usually are provided with the opportunity to work together due to the time, very short timeframe that was not possible as much as we have in past amendments. But I have gone through, I'd like a second opportunity, maybe another shot at trying to explain sort of what the purpose is of each, of each one of these proposals in a very brief and concise manner, if you'll allow me the latitude in doing that. Oh-nine, oh-three, changes the resignation requirements of our current charter provision that are required when you're resigning to run for another office. Oh-nine, oh-four, expressly allows for letters of resignation to be filed. We don't have that in our charter yet. It's allowing for that to happen expressly in our charter. Oh-nine, oh-five, shortens the term of the appointment until there is another election. So in other words, if the appointment were to be, if the resignation were to occur in the first year, there'd still be three years left on that term. Oh-nine, oh-five serves to shorten that until the next, shorten the term until it can be filled with the next election. Oh-nine, oh-six, provides for an election to fill the vacancy when there is a resignation. And that is within, when the resignation occurs, it's an expected resignation, in other words. So it's for a time certain. Oh-nine, oh-seven is the process that fills a vacancy when the resignation was not expected or not within those allowable dates. And then oh-nine, oh-eight covers the nomination process. So that, that's my concise version of what all of those amendments are intended to do. They are all addressing different items. And with that, I'm happy to address any additional questions or try and clarify additionally if I can.
Why does the nomination process have to be changed from what it is?
The nominations, actually, the, the changes to the nominations are probably the most minor of all, and that's just to eliminate the, just to allow for regular city elections in that one.
It says, remove the references to specific elections to provide for the nomination of any candidate for elected city office to be placed on regular August primary or special election ballots.
If you look on the very last page, Mayor, of the package, it, it covers the redline version. That's probably the easiest way to figure out what the seven point nine is. It's eliminating the regular, the words "regular city," and it's eliminating the words "for each election year" because those were superfluous. So the addition is to add city elective offices in there as a qualifier.
Okay.
And then to delete all the other.
Now, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Beltrame, you had the question of why we need to do all of those, and now with that explanation, I really could move forward, backward, which way?
I, I mean, I, I understand that that's, and that's what the city attorney said before. I still don't understand why they're necessary.
You don't understand, pardon?
Why it's necessary.
Why it's necessary, okay.
I'm, I'm still lost with that. I'm sorry. I'm just real dense about that.
Okay. Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I guess, if you could provide me with more, what is it that you're not sure is necessary? Because I'm, I'm just not understanding where you're coming from on that. If we have created section six point two point one to allow for putting vacancies for election after an appointment on a ballot, whether they're vacant or whether they've got an appointee, on a ballot of a regular election or a primary, why do we need another section that says you can put this kind of vacancy on this kind of a ballot and this kind of vacancy on this kind of a ballot? I, I believe that we've already done that. I don't understand any conflict in six point two point one with the existing charter. That's my problem.
So in other words, we've, by the vote of council, six point two point one on the ballot, six point seven on the ballot.
No, we have not put six point seven on the ballot. That's where we are.
No, we're on six point seven one.
Yeah. Right. This new language. I don't understand why we need it.
So, because Mrs. Bloom explained, you had to do six point two, that section, and then six point seven. And you're saying, now that we've done six point seven, I mean, the majority, not all of us, why do we need the other sections, is what you're saying, okay?
Why do we need new language?
Yes. Mr. Zerlag?
I said this before and is still true, between Lori and Tony and myself, I'm the weak link in this entire process. But I'm wondering if Mrs. Beltrame thinks that your argument is a subset of what was initially explained, and that subset doesn't need to be articulated in ballot language because it could be done administratively? Is that your question?
Basically, I believe that by changing the language in six point seven that we've already done, allow us for these other things.
Because it's a subset?
Yeah.
Of what was articulated earlier?
We've done the umbrella, so why do we need to articulate each spoke? I mean, that's kinda where I am.
If it pass, if it passes, if the electorate votes for it, then it goes into the charter. Then do we need to change wording in the charter that just is reflective by that vote? Or do we just leave that other, those other sections as is? That's my question. And then we have to go back and visit, we defeated, item
Three.
Six point two G. We still have to deal with that, now that we've done this others. Okay, Councilwoman Fleming?
I've been really quiet, but, I mean, there are people that spend probably a lot more time on this than we do. We have a charter revision committee that met on this. We had the city attorney meet on it. We had the city clerk involved in it. And they spend a lot of time, and I'm sure if they had felt there was a benefit in shortcutting this, they would've brought a different recommendation to us. But they put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think probably what we have here, an old British term is belts and braces. You know, we make and cover it with, with shorter version, a cliff note version, so to speak. But I think what they've done, they've tried to take the existing charter and, and live by that and amend section by section to accomplish what we want. And from what I've seen in the past and what we're experiencing here tonight, even though we're trying our best, you know, we don't do very well drafting language at this table. But we're doing our very best, and I think everybody wants a favorable outcome here. But if I might recommend, even though we might be able to shortcut it, I think what we have here is belts and braces, and I would recommend that we go through this and, and just to prove what these good people that we've appointed to these positions, and our city attorney and our city clerk have already gone through in, in much more detail. And, yeah, maybe we could shortcut it, but I think we're up against a timeframe, and we could probably spend the rest of the night trying to do this. And I appreciate, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think what we have, again, repeating myself, belts and braces accomplishes what we want to do. It may be more than we, we might need, we might could do a cliff note version, but I think this gets the job done. If we can move forward with these and vote favorably to, to amend the charter the way it's been proposed, I think we'll accomplish what we set out to do.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Howarak?
I, I just wanted to add that with respect to items that come out of boards and commissions that we have, I would tend to err, not err, but I would tend to accept what they give us unless I believe that there's a catastrophic possibility that they have erred. I don't see that here. The, and I will also add that we need to be careful in recognizing the distinction between what's called a city election, which is an event year election in every odd year, and other elections, which, what we've been talking about this evening are even year elections, whether that be in August or November. There's a distinction there. Our charter, generally speaking, refers to C elections, which would happen in, in November odd years. And one of the, a couple of the problems with the charter is, is not so much that the charter has changed, but statutes have changed. And therefore, you no longer have the, either A, the ability to basically call an election almost any time you want, or B, the annual city elections. And another issue with our current charter is, as you see here, a lot of the election provisions are kinda, they're just boom, they're thrown in there. They're in six-two, they're in six-seven, and they're in section seven also. And unfortunately, if you wanna change one, you have to grab those other sections.
Further discussion? You have
I guess it's just a
Yes.
Consideration of my colleague, Councilmember Beltrame, who made the comment that there was a qualm about going down that road, and now, having gone down that road, are there enough roadblocks at this point to steer away from it or just put it into four-wheel drive?
The item before us is proposal nine, oh-nine, oh-six, which is section six point seven point one. We have a resolution by Eisenbacher and a second by Fleming. And there we stop. Are folks ready for a vote on this one? No further discussion? Pardon?
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
The thing that's really frustrating to me is I remember discussing this with the clerk, and this second paragraph of section six point seven had a meaning that was different from the typical meaning. We basically had to be, have to be a clerk to really understand it. And I can't remember that.
Are you speaking to the length, the
That wasn't this section, that was the other section.
The charter language?
That is.
Do you remember that conversation, then?
I do.
Are you speaking to the existing language?
There, there was a section that was impacted completely differently from the normal reading by a non-clerk.
In the second section of the existing charter, correct?
Which section was that?
It was actually six point seven, if, I mean, I recall the conversation because I was, was there. And it dealt with the special, like, the deadlines for filing for a special election and when it was ninety days. And, so it really wouldn't have any relevance to My concern. Your, yeah, your concern.
Okay.
But I, I do recall that conversation.
Yeah, because basically, the section is more of an instruction to the clerk than it is to the instructions to the council.
Okay, do you want me to call the clerk and call the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Palata? On six point seven point one, that's proposal oh-nine, oh-six.
Councilmember Beltrame?
No.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
Mayor Shelling?
No. Motion pa, fails. Okay, six point seven point two.
Keep up the string if no one else wants to read.
Goodness.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Councilman Eisenbacher.
Resolve, thank you. Resolve that the Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November third, two thousand nine city general election. Charter amendment, proposal nine dash zero seven. A proposal to amend the city, Troy City Charter, section six point seven, to add a provision for electing the successor to fill a midterm vacancy of a city-elected official at a primary, at a August primary election. Shall section six point seven be amended to add, add new provisions designated as six point seven point two to allow for the election of candidates to fill any midterm vacancies created prior to April first in even numbered, in even years for the remainder of a city-elected office term at the next August primary election? Passage this proposal is necessary for the passage of proposals nine dash four, nine dash oh-four, nine dash oh-six?
Oh-five.
I'm sorry, nine dash oh-five and and nine dash oh-six, right?
We didn't pass.
Oh, we didn't pass it. Okay, so nine dash oh-four and nine dash oh-five. Defeat of any one or more of proposals, nine dash three?
We didn't do that.
Yet. Nine dash oh-four, nine dash oh-five, nine dash oh-seven, and nine dash oh-eight will result in defeat of proposals nine dash four and nine dash seven.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Brumfield. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
As we go through this, did note, the, the PS at the tail end, I, I think once we, it works its way and you've got some passed, some didn't, that language has, we have to make sure that we've got those numbers right. Because if, if it failed, for instance, oh-nine, oh-three failed, it can't be in any of the following proposals, so just to make
Can we have a resolution to fix that?
Mrs. Bloom?
It would be my suggestion that after all of these are gone through, that at that point in time, then you might reconsider to change the numbers for all of the provisions so that they reflect
The ones that passed. Correct.
Ones that passed.
Okay. Do you wanna discuss this one, or you wanna just vote it? Okay, do you want to discuss this one or you want to just vote out? Okay, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwell?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
Mayor Shilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltramini?
No.
Motion fails. Section seven point zero nominations proposal oh nine oh eight, zero nine oh eight.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Thank you. Resolve that Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November third, two thousand nine city general election. Charter amendment, proposal nine dash oh eight. A proposal to amend Troy City Charter, section seven point nine nominations, to permit the election of candidates for city offices at any available election. Shall section seven point nine be amended to remove the reference to specific elections to provide for the nomination of any candidate for city elected office to be placed on regular primary or spec, rate, I'm sorry, placed on regular August primary or special election ballots? Note, passage of this proposal is necessary for the passage of proposals nine dash four, nine dash, nine dash four, nine dash five. Defeat of any one or more of proposals, nine dash oh three, nine dash oh four, nine dash oh five, and nine dash oh eight will result in defeat of proposals, nine dash oh four, nine dash oh six. I'm sorry, nine dash oh four.
Yes, no? Okay, do we have a second?
Speaker.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming. We approve the resolution as printed and read with a correction to August primary. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwell?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
No.
Oh, I take that back. No.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Would you say yes, Councilwoman Brumfield, Beltramini? Motion passes. Okay, now.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
At our last city council meeting, we postponed the following language. And therefore, I would move this because it can stand alone. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves as to form the following proposed charter amendment for the November third, two thousand nine city general election. A proposal to amend the Troy City Charter, section six point two G, vacancies in elective office to allow for continued service for city council members seeking another elected city office until the seating of a new council. Shall section six point two G be amended by deleting the requirement for a city council member seeking to be a candidate for any other city elected office, resign from the council prior to the filing deadline for the municipal election, and submitting in its place a requirement that a city council member shall file with the city clerk prior to July first in irrevocable letter of resignation to allow for the future vacancy created to be placed on the next regular election ballot? Yes, no?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, who is the second? Councilwoman Kerwin? Discussion? I need to question, regular election, does that include all elections, not just city elections?
Include the city.
Only going to be city.
The way this is worded, it would only occur at a regular city election because it is deleting the requirement for the resignation and putting in its place an irrevocable letter if you're running for another seat.
Do we need to insert the word regular city election? The city election, or do we just leave it with regular election? That's why I'm asking. Because then the other things that you voted on here.
It all said regular election.
I know, it said regular. And it included presidential and everything else.
Madam Mayor, I think that was, that was actually addressed last time. That specific language came from the Assistant Attorney General or whomever that was.
Absolutely.
So that was the specific language as it came before his last time.
You discussed that at the last meeting?
Yes. It was in all the notes for the last meeting. I think that it was postponed to the end of the things. And I don't know, I can't say that it was discussed. I know it was in the background prior to the last meeting.
Mrs. Blum, will you interpret for me?
Interpret whether it should be regular.
When it says regular election?
It was done intentionally to provide for, you know, a regular election when there were other items that came before. Again, the goal was to avoid having to pay for.
No, I'm asking, is it a regular city election or a regular election, which could be presidential or whatever?
Madam?
Mrs. Blum?
This only applies because it is pertinent to a member seeking to be a candidate for any other city elected office. Shall, elective office, shall resign from council prior to the filing deadline for the municipal election and substituting in its place a requirement that a city council member shall file with the city clerk prior to July first in irrevocable letter of resignation to allow for the future vacancy created to be placed on the next regular. It only applies to city things. So therefore, it can only apply to a city election ballot.
I'm inquiring because of the discussion that we had on the other items about having a city item that could appear on a presidential ballot or whatever. And I'm only asking for clarification so that we know before the vote.
I guess if someone, if something happened.
And I'm asking, Mrs. Blum, Councilwoman Beltramini, I'm not asking you. Mrs. Blum?
The timing is such that it only applies to the November elections because that would be the only time that you'd have somebody resigning their seat to run for another city elective office.
Probably.
Mayor?
Okay, Councilman Eisenbacher?
I think this proposal is in conflict with our first proposal that passed, which would be the new.
Six point two one?
Six point two point one?
Six point two one, yes, nine dash oh four. Because the language there is we create the A, B, and C. And this item contains.
Two G. Yeah.
A. So then we'd have a duplicate resolution.
But I think we need to address this in two G, otherwise we don't have this option. I don't know.
And the other thing is, Councilwoman Beltramini, that if the other items fail on the ballot, that item could pass on its own. But the other items that are tie barred could fail.
This isn't tie barred.
Right, right, that's why I'm saying, this is why you went back to it. Because you mentioned it when we were talking about six two G on the first vote. Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, the provisions are duplicative. And we did put it in A, but you could also present it as a standalone question. And then what happens there, first of all, if all of the tie barred ones do not pass, then, and this one were to pass, then this would be enacted. If both of them were to pass, then it would have to go to the one that received the highest votes.
Okay. Oh, we had a, we had a motion and a second and a discussion. Does somebody else want to discuss it some more?
Sure. Mayor?
Councilman Harlak?
I would prefer simply to reconsider the original motion.
Six two G as it's?
The nine three, the one that came out of charter.
Yeah, nine three.
Because the committee decided to adopt or recommend that language subsequent to their original proposal to forward the language which is on the table right now. And I would prefer to go with their recommendation.
And do you want to indicate why? You think this is more clear? Follows the pattern of the other items? What's the reasoning?
For the reasons previously stated, it's my understanding that that would be the clearer way to go.
Okay, further discussion? Councilwoman Beltramini or Councilwoman Kerwin, do you want to speak in favor of the resolution that you proposed?
No.
What page was that on in the minutes?
It's the added packet.
I'm sorry.
The latest middle packet.
I know, I'm looking, I'm in there, I just want to find what page. It's probably near the end, right? I found it before. Okay, yeah, it was postponed to five until the end of the meeting. Sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I said at the beginning of the evening that I didn't want to see a ballot with two extraneous pieces and six tie barred together. Mayor Potem Harlak then said, okay, maybe we can do part of this and not make the leap. So in voting in favor of three of these suggestions, I felt that they accomplished the purpose of allowing people to resign by letter, creating a vacancy sometime determined in the future. Allowing council to appoint for that vacancy for a temporary measure, and then allowing the citizens of Troy to fill that vacancy with some degree of permanence at the first election for which we would not be the sole payer. This is a different proposal than the one that is tie barred because this one can stand alone. And that is why I made this motion in this fashion. Three is my maximum to tie bar to get this job done tonight.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Harlak?
I quite frankly think we're probably trying to approach the same thing a little differently. And my only concern, I should say, at this point is that with the references to the original zero nine zero three in the resolutions that passed, I want to make sure that we cover all of those if we're going to split that one out. Because the proposals that passed reference the original in this yellow sheet, zero nine zero three. And so we need to go back and clarify that numbering, I believe.
Sure.
Okay, I have no certainty that that's going to happen.
Madam, Madam Mayor, question for this.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Question for the city attorney and/or the clerk.
Yes.
I wish I could make the Latin resolution to give you editorial. But the nomenclature we use to number these ballot proposals, will that prevail or will the A G or you or someone else tie those all with new numbers? Or can we, through some resolution, empower you to tie them appropriately and create new nomenclature for those ballot proposals as far as their numbering for the ballot?
Mrs. Blum?
Because of the changes that have been made and because I would hate to miss something tonight, I would frankly prefer a resolution directing us to make any changes that are consistent with councils, you know, with the, any numbering changes that are consistent with the direction of council to submit to the A G's office. And then that way, we can go through and we can, you know, catch any of the numbers that were. But I think because the language was such that was read with this language in there that you will have to have a resolution allowing us to do that for each of the ones that are passed.
We can do that.
Could I ask, Councilwoman Beltramini, is the resolution that you read, is it in the hard copy? I can't find it on the.
I read it from, I read it from the, I pulled up my agenda copy from two weeks ago.
See, I don't have it here. And I want to read it before I vote out. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might ask a question, just, just for clarification. Is, this has dragged on a little bit. So I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page since we are in kind of a bit of a recess here. What is the effective difference between the language that Councilwoman Beltramini has here and that which is, or maybe you can even answer that, Councilwoman Beltramini, and that which was going to be E, what is it, nine, zero nine zero three?
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
In my mind, this one can stand alone. The other one must be tie barred. And as I said, freeze my max for tie barring on a multi-unit ballot. And we've already done that, so.
Okay.
The reason I wanted to read it for myself is to make sure because we had so many changes since that one came. When that one first appeared, I was in favor of doing that. And I just wanted to make sure with all this other clutter that we had that it was still that item. And I have no problem with the renumbering kind of stuff to make it fit the ballot correctly. Okay, so the resolution before us is moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution for the charter, for the ballot, that was the wording that was originally submitted. Right?
Submitted on August third, two thousand nine.
Okay, third. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, the vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwell?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Beltramini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
And Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Passes?
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I would like to make the resolution that our assistant city attorney, or I'm sorry, our city attorney made, it's getting too late. Our city attorney made to correct the nomenclature and ballot language. Numbering and notes to match the intent of the resolutions passed.
No, what was passed, not the intent of what was passed, what was passed.
No, it's what was passed is wrong.
Yeah. Intent, what we passed, is correct.
Mrs. Blum?
The numbers wrong.
Perhaps the resolution. Perhaps the resolution could be something even more general to allow us to work with the attorney general with the tie bar language so that it matches the number of proposals that'll be submitted to the voters.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramee, that we approve the resolution as stated by Mrs. Bloom.
Mayor?
Did you get the resolution, Mrs. Palata? Okay, discussion, Councilwoman Eisenb, uh, Haralack, Mayor Protem Haralack, sorry.
I, I was, I was simply going to ask that, or I should say, bring to the attention of council that at the last meeting, there was a recommendation from the city clerk's office that we have a resolution that approves charter amendments to be placed on a ballot in numerical order by charter section number. And I was simply thinking that we could have, add on to that resolution and, and say that any references therein would be, and the resolutions that were passed be accordingly adopted by, suppose this will do the, will be sufficient if the city attorney is happy.
Because they all have to go to the state anyway, right? Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, I do.
One more, one more question, unless you incorporate that into it.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Remind me, can nine seven, zero nine zero seven, did that one pass?
It was there.
Okay, then I don't have questions.
Zero nine seven?
No. Thank you.
Pardon?
No, didn't. Thank you.
Okay. All right, are we set on this? Okay, back to...
The vote.
Pardon?
The vote.
Vote on the resolution, yes.
Who was the second?
Oh, I did second.
Yeah, you did. Okay, Mrs. Palata, vote on that.
Councilmember Halliwell?
Her, me, yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramee?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council, do you want to make any comments about any of the reports? I don't think we're going to have our study session tonight, do you?
No.
I want to meet a closed session.
The resolution that Councilwoman Haralack brought up, we should...
What?
Should add.
We should add the one that was on our agenda from last time, where the clerk requested that we approve the resolve of the Troy City Council hereby approves the charter amendments to be placed on the November third, two thousand nine ballot in the numerical order by charter section number.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Moved by Council.
Didn't, didn't Councilmember Haralack add that?
Yes, to the, to the, oh, if you wrote it, yeah, that's great.
Okay.
When, when we talked about the other item, it was all included. Seeing Mr. Miller got it. Got to be a fisherman to catch those things there, David. Okay, uh, I assume that the study item will move on to the next meeting then, huh?
I think you're very correct.
Okay, what about the close...
My everyone's thought exercise tonight.
Okay, what about the closed session, Mrs. Bloom, do we have to do tonight?
Yes, Mayor, we do have some timing.
Okay, yes, does somebody want to move that one?
No, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
I would move that resolve that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL fifteen dot two six eight E pending litigation, Steve V. City of Troy et al., and Marian Henig V. City of Troy et al.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramee, seconded by Mayor Protem Haralack. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramee?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
And Halliwell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need to ask a question before we recess. Do we have to have a vote to extend the meeting when we're in an exec session, Mrs. Bloom? Or if we get in there before twelve, do we vote to it?
Because you're discussing it before twelve o'clock.
Okay, now everybody has to run in there, you got seven minutes. All right, we'll recess for, uh, and we'll take up the next session in the other room.